You know?
I'm hearing you now.
Okay, perfect. Um, I was just mentioning that um, tech is going to open up a camera access for Monica Castillo will be working with us from the city attorney's office this evening. And then as soon as you see everyone's faces, you're ready to go, Dennis.
Thank you.
Do we have Skylar tonight?
We have something that looks like.
We have a background for Skylar. I saw him a second ago. There we go.
There's the man.
The man of mystery.
The man of cobwebs.
Oh, you're muted, boss.
Yeah, I don't know. It's kind of weird.
There you go.
You know what?
Looks like it's foggy.
He's beaming in from a parallel universe.
It's this storm.
Coming from Mars.
There you go.
Cool. Much better.
Okay. Everyone. Good evening and friends and neighbors. I would like to call order the Malibu Planning Commission's special meeting on this date of March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to COVID nineteen pandemic. Is that really true? Commissioners and city staff are participating in the Zoom meeting from remote locations. All votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city dot org slash forward slash virtual meeting. At the screen, click on one of two tabs to either watch or sign up to speak on particular items. Those wishing to speak must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Please sign up before the item has been called by the chair. Those wishing to defer time to someone else intending to speak are not required to sign up but must be present in the meeting. If instead of speaking, you wish to donate your time to another speaker, please click the raised hand button at the bottom of the Zoom screen when the public hearing for the item is open. A speaker may accept up to five additional minutes, one minute each from each speaker that defers time for a maximum total of eight minutes. And I guess, do we have Alex tonight? And he'll show that on the slide. Oh, there's Attorney Castillo. Yes, we have. Yes, there. Look at that. We have cooperation. This is good. Commissioners, when you have comments, please raise your hand and I will call you in turn so we can make clear for the record and the public. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Peak.
Here.
Vice Chair Mazza.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Vice Chair.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda. I'd also like to staff recommends I'd also like to dedicate the meeting to John Wall who passed away yesterday. He was one of the uh founding people that worked on making us a city. Well-known twenty, thirty years ago.
Okay, that'd be, I'm sure that's, that's just, that's great.
I'll second that.
I'll second that, yeah.
Okay, wonderful.
Uh, Vice Chair. I'm sorry?
Go ahead, Rebecca.
Vice Chair Mazza.
Yes.
Commissioner Peak.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, um. Well, really, we don't don't have any ceremonies or anything like that tonight. And
Um, very quickly, the agenda for the meeting was properly posted on March ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Yes, thank you. Um, I guess we, we jump right into public comment if we've got a few people.
Um, I believe you'll, would you like to read the, the title of the hearing and then we could get the presentation?
Of course, I'm very sorry. I believe I think, is that, is Joyce going to read to us tonight? Is it, Joyce is going to read his night stories here? Nighttime stories?
Yes, Chair. Joyce will present the item along with Tyler Eaton as well. They are the two that have been working on this. And available for you as well from BBK in an addition to Monica who's stepping in for Pat tonight. We also have Todd Leishman. I hope I pronounced that correct. Uh, Todd is essentially, for lack of a better term, the in-house expert for BBK on this matter.
Wonderful. Chair? Uh, well, let's see, we have
Was there any public comment on things that are not on this agenda? I saw that one item on there. I didn't know if we had any.
I, it's, it's not on our agenda.
Not on the agenda.
That's not included for special meetings. We just jump right into reading the title of the topic and then um move forward.
Thank you.
Uh, right, hang on, Vice Chair Mazza.
Yeah, uh. Normally, when we have super complicated things like this, we conduct the meeting serially with a consensus on each item we discuss. Uh, I would suggest we do this meeting that way, and then we have a motion at the end with all the things that have been approved by consensus rather than try to figure it out at the end. I just want to suggest we use that same method.
Irrespective of what order we actually talk about things, we should sort of settle them as we go.
Exactly.
Anybody else have a thought on that?
Or, or at least put a pin in it. You know, if it's up in the air, we could go back to it.
Commissioner Jennings. Yeah, I, we've done that in the past. We have little straw votes and if an issue has three votes to move it forward, then fine. If it doesn't, we just move on to the next subject. Okay, great. Can you take a roll call on that, do we?
No.
Okay. Wonderful. Okay, um. Joyce, we have Joyce and Tyler and uh, Mr. Senior Planner Eaton, go ahead, Joe, uh, go ahead.
Do we need disclosures or not on, on an ordinance?
No.
No, okay.
He, we won't need disclosures.
All right. Thank you. I was just waiting for my PowerPoint to come up. So the item before you tonight is consideration of the city's accessory dwelling unit ordinance. There are two components, the local coastal program amendment and a zoning code or municipal code amendment. Next slide. By way of background, this item was first discussed by the planning commission in September fourth of twenty eighteen. Shortly after that date, the Woolsey fire occurred, and then shortly after that, um, you had the COVID restrictions, and so the ordinance did not return to the planning commission until May twentieth of twenty twenty-one. The planning commission provided direction to staff at both the September and May meeting. And those, and the documents were updated and uh, rescheduled for January the eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, due to time constraints, the item was not heard and was continued to March the seventh. And then at the planning commission's March the seventh meeting, the item was continued before the public hearing was open. And the planning commission directed uh, staff to complete additional studies and referrals uh, based on concern about the cumulative impact of additional ADUs in the city. After that hearing, uh, because the additional studies it would require additional funding, staff scheduled a meeting with the city council, and that was held on August the twenty-second, uh, twenty twenty-two. And uh, what's, we discussed with the uh, city council, the need for additional studies. And the direction from the city council to, to staff was to minimize the uh, changes to the existing LCP by utilizing most of the existing second unit regulations. Since those um, already were protective of coastal resources and public access and that no additional studies were uh, needed. That brings us to the meeting, um, tonight's meeting, uh, actually on March the sixth is when the item was uh, scheduled uh, to be heard. And that ordinance, both the LCP and the MMC was updated uh, consistent with uh, direction from the council. And uh, because of time constraints, it was continued to tonight's hearing. Next slide. There are two documents that will regulate ADUs in the city. The first is the local coastal program. That document will uh regulate um, detached, attached and ADUs from converted accessory buildings. Uh, because they are defined as development and uh, would have to be processed under the LCP. Under the MNC code, uh, ADUs that were created inside of an existing single-family uh, dwelling uh, are not considered development and would be, would be processed under the MMC. The MMC must include standards for attached, detached and converted accessory buildings and must be consistent with state law. Even though uh, for the most part, those will be processed under the LCP. One of the first steps staff will take when an uh, ADU application is submitted is to check the um, the application for compliance with the LCP, and if the LCP requires an ACDP or an administrative coastal development permit. Um, attached, detached and converted accessory buildings would be processed under the MMC, even though they are developed standards for them. Uh, I'm sorry, under the um, LCP, even though there are development standards under the MMC. Next slide. These next two slides provide uh, an overview of the permit process and the development standards. And compare them to the existing standards for second units. So for attached, detached and converted in accessory building, those uh are proposed as administrative coastal development permit, and uh, that is what would be required uh, under the current ordinance for second units. The decision authority is the planning director. Um, those uh, ACDPs are reported to the commission and they are appealable. That is the case of the second unit existing ordinance, and in is what is staff is proposing in the LCP for uh, ADU units. Under the uh, MNC code, there are two categories. First, there is a category of about four different scenarios in which are billing permit only. And if they do not fall within the billing permit only, then they would um, be, they would require an administrative plan review and a building permit. That decision is made by the planning director and it is reportable, it is not reportable to the planning commission and is not appealable. So again, most of these units uh, that I'm referring to now would be processed, a process under the LCP. For junior ADUs and ADUs inside of an existing single-family dwelling. Currently, um, those would be processed with an administrative coastal development permit. Although uh, staff does not recall um, ever having an application to put a second unit inside of an existing uh, single-family dwelling. The, under the um, LCP, uh, junior ADUs and ADUs inside of an existing single-family would not uh, are not considered development, so there are no standards for them. They would be processed under the MMC. Uh, for a junior ADU, which is the five hundred square foot um, unit, uh, typically uh, from a converted from a uh, bedroom. Uh, those would fall in the billing permit only. For ADUs inside existing single-family uh, dwellings, they would require administrative plan review. They are not allowed, they would not be allowed inside of a multifamily dwelling, and, and I'll speak a little bit uh, uh, in a future slide about um, ADUs on multifamily uh, properties and inside and attached to buildings, multifamily buildings. The decision authority um, for these junior ADUs and ADUs inside of an existing uh, would be the planning director and currently, if somebody were to propose a second unit inside of an existing single-family, it would be the planning director's uh, decision. And it would be reportable and appealable to the commission. In the MMC, it would not be um, reported to the planning commission and it would not be appealable. And this is consistent with state law. The, the city has to process these um, ADUs administratively. Next slide. Or ministerial. This uh, slide shows the development standards. Uh, so for the size of, of a detached ADU or an ADU that was converted in a necessary building. Currently, it's um, the size of a second unit, which is nine hundred square feet, and that's further limited by the total development square footage. So it is possible they would be smaller uh, if they didn't have enough uh, total development square footage or TDSF. Staff is recommending uh, twelve hundred square feet um, as the size. And we'll discuss that further in another slide. Cause this is one of the few instances where this would not be the same as the existing second unit standards, which is nine hundred. For the uh, ADUs inside of a um, I'm sorry, yeah, ADUs either attached uh, detached, I'm sorry. I've, I'm on the wrong line. Uh, that either detached or converted, i- if they were processed under the MMC. Staff is recommending the minimum required by state law, and so state law says that um, a city could not um, has to allow at least an eight hundred square foot for a studio or one bedroom and a thousand square foot for uh, two or more bedrooms. And um, that is what staff is recommending. Uh, for the size of an ADU that was attached to a primary dwelling. Again, if it was a second unit, it'd be the nine hundred and then further limited by total development square footage. Staff is recommending in the LCP that it be fifty percent of the living area of the existing primary uh, dwelling or twelve hundred square feet, whichever is less, and that is to balance out if you have a um, one thousand square foot building, it should be fifty percent of that, not twelve hundred square feet. In the LCP, this would be further limited by total development square footage, because total development square footage applies to uh, ADUs built in the uh, under the LCP. Again, uh, an attached um, ADU would not be allowed uh, on, on a multifamily building. For the MMC, again, it's fifty percent of the living area of the existing single-family um. And that is the upper limit is just the fifty percent. Uh, that, just as in the uh, LCP, state law does not require the city um, to allow uh, them uh, attached to a primary dwelling or to a multifamily building. In terms of the size for junior uh, ADUs and inside, uh, it would be nine hundred, again, consistent with the second unit. Would not be applicable under the LCP because those would be processed under the MMC. Five hundred square feet for the junior. There is no limit and an ADU inside of an existing um, single-family dwelling, and that is important to note. Um. The state did not um, put any limit, so somebody could uh, increase their um, size of a uh, unit inside of an existing single-family dwelling, um, sometimes referred to uh, internal, uh, an internal ADU, so that could be you know, twelve hundred square feet, even if the house was just twelve hundred square feet. In the uh, municipal code, they would be allowed uh, um, only in non-livable spaces of a multifamily dwelling, and so state law allows um, build uh, multifamily buildings to utilize non-livable space such as their garage or their storage area to um, construct ADUs up to twenty-five percent of the total uh, overall of the units in the building plus one additional. In terms of setbacks uh, for the second unit, the setbacks are uh, consistent with your existing code um, and uh, single-family dwellings. Nothing um, would change there for the second unit. Second, you would have to meet all um, current setbacks. Under the MMC, um, four foot side and rear um, setbacks would be allowed. For a demolished accessory building, uh, currently, if somewhere were to demolish a hundred percent in a accessory building, they would have to meet current setbacks, and that would be the same uh, in the LCP uh, for an ADU. However, state law allows a demolished and rebuilt accessory building to maintain the same setbacks. Uh, so if it was processed under the MMC, they could maintain current setbacks. For height, um, the height of a second unit um, is eighteen feet, uh, up to twenty-four for flat roofs and twenty-eight for pitched or slope with an SPR, and staff is proposing that same uh, heights uh, requirement in the um, LCP. In the MMC, the state sets out several standards. They start with a minimum of sixteen feet and then um, provide several scenarios in which that height can increase up to twenty-five uh, feet. All other development standards um, for an ADU in the uh, LCP would be consistent with the second unit. And all other development standards in the MMC would be as allowed by state law. Next slide. As I mentioned, staff is recommending a twelve hundred square foot um, ADU be allowed in the LCP without regard to the number of bedrooms. And this is because the city council had at a, uh, right shortly after the Woolsey fire, had agreed that fire rebuild applicants could place a temporary housing unit on their property up to twelve hundred square feet. And so uh, staff believes it's important to stay consistent with that direction um, so that anybody that has a twelve hundred square foot uh, temporary house would be able to utilize it a- as their uh, permanent ADU. If this is one of the areas that the planning commission has not had an opportunity to provide uh, staff feedback on. There are alternative options if the planning commission uh, did not want to do um, to allow up to twelve hundred square feet. That would be the state minimum of the eight fifty for studio and one bedroom, a thousand for two bedroom. Or the um, consistent with the second unit or guest unit, it could, uh, the planning commission could uh, recommend uh, nine hundred square foot maximum or some combination of that, a nine hundred uh, for instance, for a studio or one bedroom, and then a thousand or twelve hundred for a two-bedroom unit. Next slide. In terms of parking requirements, staff, when we updated the ordinance consistent with the uh, city council direction to make the ordinance consistent with the second unit uh, provisions. We removed all of the parking exceptions. So in any instance where the code allowed um, like a garage conversion uh, without replacing parking um, for uh, public safety reasons. We removed all of those and required replacement parking for all garage conversions. And also, uh, we removed the state um, ADU uh, section that had the exceptions, the one-half mile from a bus stop and, and those uh, those provisions were also removed. Um, last week, um, staff um, had, uh, had a conversation with the coastal commission's staff uh, to get their feedback on the revised ordinance, and they had expressed concern about the removal of all of those uh, standards. The coastal commission um, is a state agency, as is the uh, HCD is a state agency, and so the coastal commissions um, wants to uh, as much as possible um, um, respect the wishes of HCD as long as coastal resources are not, are protected. And our discussion centered uh, solely around parking in this instance. Uh, for instance, they thought it uh, would probably be appropriate um, to require replacement parking on anywhere um, in uh, close to a beach or in um, an area with uh, visitor-serving uses. We spoke to them a little bit about uh, requiring replacement parking in the oh, um, high-fire hazard areas with one means of access. They thought that was, uh, would be appropriate. And so the direction um, to us or um, was to add some of those things back in, uh, as, and this again, I'm speaking only of um, of uh, the parking. Um. So if the planning commission uh, were inclined to do that, staff has included a list of the items uh, that were discussed either in pre- in previous staff reports or were in previous ordinances. And that uh, was requiring the replacement parking within a quarter mile of a beach, uh, public accessway, trailhead or other public uh, serving area. We discussed in a, in a previous staff report, consideration of lot size, uh, meaning in the larger RR lots, uh, it uh, conversions uh, perhaps uh, could be allowed since there would be sufficient area on the uh, parcel, uh, because it would be a larger parcel to park off the street. Um, again, the parking with one-half mile uh, walking distance of public transit, that was uh, in state law. And then uh, again, as I mentioned uh, previously, the only one means of access in the very high-fire hazard uh, severity zone. So staff is um, looking for feedback from the uh, planning commission as to whether you, you wanted us to put some of those back in or uh, uh, or recommend at least to the city council that they consider doing that. Next slide. We have a um, a couple of revisions that we would like um, the planning commission to consider. The first is a uh, revision to the um, municipal code. And it is the language in the very high-fire hazard severity zone. We've uh, gotten a lot of correspondence and questions, including from Vice Chair Mazza uh, about the need to um, more closely mirror what's in the county code. And the county code um, says the two distinct means of vehicle access uh, is to a highway. Um, and so we um, agree with that um, it is as an appropriate change, and it really would not change anything um, as written. It was, that was what was intended. Um, in the language that was be originally before the council. I'm sorry, before the commission and adding it in, which is um, you know, get rid of any misunderstanding or confusion. So we are recommending that change. Next slide. On that provision, uh, staff wanted to take a minute uh, to, to sort of step back and, and uh, discuss um. the source of the language, and this was based on our conversations. We had a conversation with Vice Chair Mazza to see if we could answer some of the questions. As you'll recall, at your last meeting, he said he had quite a few questions. And during that discussion, there were some questions about the language for the very high-fire hazard severity zone and where that language came from and how it is different in, from what staff is proposing. So also, as the commission is aware, you have gotten correspondence from members of the public that often request that you place the standards that are in the county ordinance in the city's ordinance. So it's important to note, there are two county ordinances that address land directly north of Malibu. The first is the North Area Plan. The North Area Plan is the general plan, if you will, for the unincorporated areas outside of the coastal zone in, in the county. The Santa Monica Mountains LCP is the governing document for the land directly north and abutting the city of Malibu. The language for the very high-fire hazard severity zone, which was in the previous line, is not in the LCP. And so there's two regulating documents, depending on the, whether you're in the coastal zone or, or outside of the coastal zone. And to confuse it further, both of these are implemented through the city, or I'm sorry, the county's Title twenty-two, their, their planning and zoning code. And so they're both in there, and so it gets confusing because the Title twenty-two has two different sections, both regulating ADUs in a different manner. So we thought it was important, just to set the stage for the conversation tonight, that we, we be clear on the source of that information. Staff is recommending for the MMC that rather, so the, in the North Area Plan, the language prohibits ADUs unless they have at least a twenty-four-foot-wide access in those areas with only one means of access to the, to the residents. Staff is recommending, instead of prohibition, that the city just increase the development standards in recognition that they are in a, they only have one means of access, and that would be larger setbacks, increased separation between building and replacement parking if they were to convert their garage. Again, all, all requirements to increase the fire safety of the house. The very high-fire hazard severity zone language was removed from the LCP, and that is because in the LCP, ADUs have to meet all development standards. So it is not needed in the LCP. Next slide. Then, for the revisions in the LCP, the first two are cleanup items. Staff noticed in LUP five-point-two-two and LIPG point-one-point-A, we had left in nine-hundred square feet, and that was when we had the different size requirements. So that's a cleanup, just to delete the nine-hundred square feet. In the LUP three-point-ten-point-five-point-C, the document made a reference to the MMC Chapter seventeen forty-eight, and it should be the LCP Chapter LIP or Section LIP three-point-fourteen-point-three. The next two proposed revisions address multi-family, ADUs in a multifamily dwelling. The ordinance that was distributed to the Planning Commission had a section that indicated that ADUs located inside of a multifamily dwelling would require an ACDP and would not be processed under the, and that was done it so that they would be processed under the LCP and not the MMC. However, with the further research and discussion with the BPK attorney, Todd, was determined that the state law does not require cities to allow ADUs inside of a multifamily dwelling. And because that would be complicated or could get complicated because you have two situations, it could be an apartment building, and then the question is which, if there's only one allowed, which of the apartment units would get it? And they also are supposed to be complete independent living facilities, and so there would have to be an external access to get to the units. So even in townhomes and condominiums, it would be difficult to locate an ADU inside the, inside of a multifamily dwelling. So staff is recommending deletion of that language and the addition of new language. And the addition of the new language is that ADUs located inside multifamily dwellings and ADUs attached to multifamily dwellings are not allowed. Detached ADUs on a multifamily's zone property shall require an ACDP. And the reason staff is recommending that attached ADUs should not be allowed on a multifamily dwellings is, again, it's generally, the size of an attached unit is generally relates to the size of the, of the unit it's being attached to, although it, the commission could certainly pick another aside. But it still goes back to the fact that these units would have to be completely independent living units with their own separate access. So you would need parking, you would need to meet all of the total development square footage. You would need an external access. It would be like adding another unit. So I hope that is clear. Staff would be happy to answer any questions, and, and again, the, the city attorney is here to assist as well. And we can talk further if the planning commission has a desire to allow multifamily dwellings to have ADUs. Next slide. Staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt the resolution you have before you, that's twenty-three-twelve, with the amendments staff has indicated in our presentation tonight, and recommending that the city council approve the LCP and the zoning text amendment to adopt and update, updated regulations as it relates to accessory dwelling units in the city. And with that, that includes staff's presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. Now I think we would go to public comment.
Thank you. Our first speaker this evening will be Jamie Francis, followed by Todd Spiegel, followed by Mark Baute.
Yes, thank you, commission, and thanks to the staff. It's been a while to talk about this topic, so I'm glad it came before the planning commission virtual meeting. I am a proponent for affordable housing. I have been engaged with the city for a while now. I've been disappointed. Baltimore Magazine came out with an article saying that ADUs are being pushed as a way of affordable housing, and I want to emphasize the point. The city needs affordable housing. They need to follow the state guidelines now. And if it is permitted with a residential detached property or attached, that these people who own the homes are going to do it for their family. They're going to do it for their friends. They're going to appreciate the value. And if it does pass and is, you know, it, it earmarks to allow the city to, you know, process this and allow it, that you have to have a contingency plan in place for people who want to move there, want to live there and need affordable housing or need to be on a voucher system and not be excluded because the private landlords will find an excuse for Airbnbs or people to host and maybe do illegal rentals or, or have people housed that are corporate or renting housing. But what about those people who need affordable and want to be in Section Eight housing, and there are no protections but multifamily units with the, with the management company? And so that's what I see. And I've just been disappointed that there is no contingency plan in place, and you have this that's assessed, but you have to make sure it's inclusive. Because if it's privatized, then somehow the landlords will do it as a directive to what their interest is. And when you have private families, they'll do what they can, which is their choice. But you're giving a choice that's à la carte for those families or those individuals who own the property, who may not even reside on the property. So I want to make those points clear and for the record. So I do appreciate the time for the, the commission and the city staff, but I hope that someone could reach out to me to let me know that you are going to have protections and you're going to follow state policy and now guidelines that Section Eight is the law and affordable housing is the law, and Malibu is delinquent in that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie. Our next speaker is Todd Spiegel.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Todd Spiegel. I'm a local architect, and I would like to address the commission in regards to the ADU standards in multifamily zones. My belief is that the spirit of the ADU law from the state is to be able to increase density and allow more residents within a community with affordable housing. And much of that housing is in multifamily units. And to be able to increase density in multifamily units, the typical factor is the parking requirements. And that's why the ADU law addresses the parking issues and the reduction of parking for ADUs to allow the increased density on properties. Now, by not allowing ADUs on multifamily housing, you're really going against the spirit of this, of this good public policy. So I would strongly encourage the commission to look at that factor and to allow ADUs to be classified on multifamily projects, even if it is essentially classifying one of the units as an ADU unit, but by allowing to reduce parking, which would make it feasible. And in that sense, also the attached ADUs to a multifamily project, it really doesn't make, it's really not feasible to require an ADU on a multifamily project to be detached. Again, we're looking at very confined spaces on these properties and, and therefore an attached multifamily project with an ADU. ADU attached to a multifamily project with reduced parking really keeps in the, the spirit of this good public policy. That's, I appreciate your time and your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Todd. Our next speaker is Mark Baute. I'm sorry, I'm just messing up on your last name there. And then he'll be followed by Howard Retske. Let me scroll through and see if I see him in the meeting. Mark, if you are in the meeting under another screen name, please click the raise hand button so we can identify you. And I'm not currently seeing him, so we'll move on to Howard Retske. While Howard is speaking, if there's anyone else in the meeting who did not sign up in advance and would like to speak on the item, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen.
Good evening. I'd just like to ask, whatever you guys decide here tonight, that it's done tonight and it's communicated to the citizens of our city in a concise, easy-to-understand way so everyone knows what the rules are. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Howard. And again, if anyone is present in the meeting and would like to provide comment, please click the raise hand button now. And seeing none.
Back to all of our smiling faces here. I see hands up already. I'm going to do something a little different here. I see, I see vice chairs up and Commissioner Hill's up. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go first because, you know, I don't talk as long. I, I would like to
Excuse me, Chair Smith?
I'm sorry, go ahead. Oh, you have something to say?
Are you have, are you closing public comment?
Oh, I am closing public comment. Thank you, Ms. Castillo, very much. Okay, on to us. I'm going to open up with, I'd like to approve or like to approve staff's recommendation. And with just one amendment to this, and that friendly amendment would be to, on a two-and-twelve pitch on the single-family units. I think that's important, that we keep a low roof on these and be better for the neighbors on some of the lots that aren't quite as big, but you're not looking at a big, big roof sitting next to you. So I will start with approving or like to approve staff's recommendation.
I'll second it for discussion purposes.
Yes, that's great. Thank you.
So your motion is to just take what we just heard and not discuss it. Just pass it on.
We are going to discuss it. Of course, we're going to discuss it. That's, that's our right, but I want to start off the meeting with that. I've seen you do that over the years, Vice Chair.
No, I'm just saying that this is complicated as Howard said. Excuse me.
Okay. Do we, you want to take a straw poll here and see what we got? Okay, Vice Chair Mazza, you were first.
Okay, I, I just want to make a suggestion, and that is we have an ADU expert here. And I, as our attorney, and I'd like to get an explanation before we start on everything, on what we're allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do. And the reason why I'm doing that is in, in the LCP proposed language, it says state law is explicit about the Coastal Act not being granted by the state ADU statute, and blah, blah, blah. So we're going to have to make decisions here. And I'd like to start off with a level playing field on what we can and cannot do. Just so we don't waste a lot of time trying to do something we can't do and doing something that we don't have to do. If that's okay with you, Chairman.
Okay, well, let's, let's go ahead. We've got Mr. Leishman, Mr. Leishman is here with us, as you just said, so we've got something he's with us. So
Excuse me, Chair and Commissioners, it's nice to be with you tonight. As Commissioner Mazza indicated, the ADU law, this is Government Code, Section six-five-eight-five-two-point-two, down toward the end, there's a clear provision in subdivision L, as in Lima, that says nothing in this section, and the section is the entire ADU statute, shall be construed to supersede or in any way alter or lessen the effect or application of the California Coastal Act. I won't read the rest of it, and by extension, the local coastal regulations. And as this body well knows, being in the coastal zone, there are important policy concerns about protecting valuable coastal resources, which is driving this statement in the ADU law. There's a recognition that coastal protection is not diminished or affected in any way by the ADU law. And the LCP or the LIP and other coastal amendments that are before you reflect that. They regulate more broadly than the city could under its zoning code, for example. And you'll see that, if you haven't already, that the LCP or the, I'm sorry, LIP regulates in ways to protect valuable coastal resources that the city does not because it cannot under its zoning code alone. So what Commissioner Mazza said is correct, and what you have before you is consistent with that.
Just one other question there. I've always been under the assumption that we decide changes in our LIP, and it cannot be imposed upon us by the Coastal Commission. We have to ask them to amend our policies. So we're open. The way I'm looking at it right now, from what you just said, is we're open to basically do what we want unless it violates some part of our LIP that's already there. And so we have a lot of freedom on what we can do.
Chair and Commission, as, as you probably Chair and Commission, as, as you probably all know too well, the, the city does not have a blank check in terms of what it can do to protect coastal resources. There are guardrails. The coastal commission does oversee local coastal regulations, has to sign off on them. There's a process for all that. But my point is that it's the normal process. You can't do whatever you want to protect the coastal resources. You do have to stay within the bounds, the established bounds and policies of the coastal act and handed down by the coastal commission. And the city has been, is well used to that. You've been doing it for a long time. So it's just, it's really just business as usual on the coastal protection side. It's, it's not the Wild West. You do have to follow the coast, the parameters. You have to work within the parameters that are allowed for under the coastal act and handed, and the regulations handed down by the coastal commission. But, but yeah, I hope that answers the question.
Well, my, my question would be something like Joyce discussed, their discussion with the coastal commission, they said, oh, we want you to have onsite parking here and non-onsite parking there. Little, little things like that. That's for us to decide and ask them if we can do it, rather than for them to tell us, correct?
Well, that's for this body to recommend to the council, and the council can make policy decisions that affect what gets shared with and run by the coastal commission, so.
Okay.
Commissioner Hill?
You're muted.
Yeah, thank you. Too many little things to click on the screen. I would say that this feels like Groundhog Day, except somehow it keeps getting more and more complicated when it seems, when we should be making it simpler. I have some initial questions, clarifications, then some sort of general observations about things. And then when we get to it, I've got a lot of thoughts about specific issues like height and parking and the particularities of it. So first, the, my couple initial questions, things I just don't understand. Under this latest proposal, and I suppose this is for Joyce, for a detached second unit, is there anything you could get with an ADU permit that you couldn't currently get with a CDP? Is, is it just that it gets, would, would now get processed as an ACDP rather than a standard CDP?
Are you referring to the LCP now, not the MMC?
Correct.
Okay, now, so the, the, so currently, if you were to propose a second unit, it would be an ACDP. After the, what, what staff is recommending would be identical to that. If you're proposing an ADU, it would be an ACDP. So there really is no difference in what's required now and what we're recommending.
So the main differences pertain to the things that would be covered under the MMC, specifically the, the junior and internal ADUs, right?
Right. You're, yes, you're, you're correct.
Okay.
And size, sorry, Commissioner Hill. Size is different. So we're proposing twelve hundred instead of nine hundred.
Okay, well, we'll get back to that. I have some various thoughts about how to handle size, but if, so if somebody wanted to build a, a second unit under the current rules and with a CDP, so no, no more than nine hundred square feet, they wouldn't be any more precluded by any of these new proposals like double egress or twenty-four foot wide street or any of, that's all MMC stuff. So if somebody could just go ahead and do a second unit now with a CDP, no further restrictions, right?
That, that is correct. They have to meet current code, but, yeah.
Okay. And then have we gotten any further clarification from coastal about the point that we, their, their guidance letter, and I'm paraphrasing now, suggests that we accommodate the ADU laws to a reasonable extent within, within our, our LCP. But in that guidance letter, nowhere did they acknowledge that we're in a very high fire hazard severity zone? And I just wonder, what, what has, has coastal said anything further about the, the fire zone?
Not specifically, other than it was discussed, Tyler and I discussed it with coastal staff. So you are correct. What coastal staff in their memorandum, and they have issued four different memorandums providing guidance. And those memorandums indicate that cities should try to accommodate state law as much as possible as long as coastal resources are protected. And when we had the conversation with them about the high fire hazard area, they did, and the one means of access, they did acknowledge that a, a situation like that would be something that they would consider, you know, different and unique and would not necessarily need to follow the state law and not provide replacement parking.
Okay, so, so that's a good transition to my sort of broader observations. Jack Ainsworth, in his guidance, said we should comply with the ADU law where we, where it doesn't conflict with coastal act and where it doesn't affect, in his words, an identifiable coastal resource. That's a, that's a pretty low bar. It doesn't say a significant coastal resource or a substantial coastal, coastal resource. And in the meantime, we're still kind of working in a vacuum without a very clear sense of what the stakes are involved. We, we, we asked for a lot of information that, you know, council subsequently said, let's not spend the money to figure all that out. But, you know, we still don't know, have no projection of how many more units this might enable. You know, is it five more ADUs or five hundred? We don't know. It's probably not five hundred, but we don't really have a survey of the egresses and the road widths. We did have that, do have that SCAG tool, but that proved to be problematical. We don't know how it relates to affordability requirements. So then specifically with respect to coastal resources, we have a memo from Don Schmitz and Cynthia Martin, I forget who signed it now, but they stated the standard from Mr. Ainsworth was that the local governments are instructed to comply with state ADU law unless there are significant adverse impacts on coastal resources. And that's not what he said. In his letter at page five, he said that the standard is is de minimis, that it, it, it has to have no potential for any individual or cumulative on coastal resources. So we have a lot of unknowns. We have a lot of potential for cumulative impacts. And so I think that says that we cannot treat the SEQA requirement or the SEQA analysis as boilerplate. With SEQA, you have to be seen with certainty that there's no potential for causing a significant effect on the environment. We can't say that. We have potential cumulative impacts. We have, coastal talks about public access as a resource, for example. But access is also a resource in terms of public safety, which is another category of the SEQA analysis. We shouldn't be decreasing access for fire safety and evacuation, the evacuation being another thing that we haven't studied. We're talking about more density of residents, so i- in evacuation, that might make things worse, worse. Traffic is a SEQA category that we should be looking at in that regard also. Potential impacts on ESHA by increasing fuel mod zones, that presents a cumulative impact potentially. That also would make ESHA more patchy, which affects wildlife habitat. And short of ESHA, just reducing open space is a resource that would be diminished, an aesthetic resource. We also have potential effects on hydrology from more leach fields and or cumulative drainage loads like Big Rock, Malibu Road, anywhere where there's potential slide hazard. And I'll just in- inject here, I have it in a different section, but Joe Drummond raised the point of, she suggested everybody should have a new OWTS if you get an ADU. I, I don't think that actually meets the, the concern. It's not so much that it be a new OWTS, it's just talking about groundwater loads in places like Big Rock and Malibu Road and a couple other places, I think, that, that any extra load could be a potential impact. So we have a bunch of identifiable potential impacts, some with cumulative effects. So we can't say there's no significance, so for, I don't see how a SEQA review has not been required on this. And that seems like something, if, if we have any potential litigants out there that they might want to take note of. Also affordability. This doesn't improve affordability. If, if the typical rent for a, a second unit is something like five thousand dollars a month, I don't know what we're, what, how this is, serves that issue at all, or how anybody can even be, you know, saying we should be, we, we have a thought from somebody that they should be rent controlled. Well, it's still, I mean, I guess that might help, but if it's five thousand bucks already, then we're not really in, in the realm of affordability. So I guess I have real problems at, at the outset, thinking that we need to expand second units at all. It is something you can do under a CDP now or an ACDP in some cases, so it just seems like we can, should be able to just respect our LCP and not have to make much further accommodation. Now, if we want, if, if everybody's leaning that way, or the majority is going that way, then I do have a bunch of different thoughts about things like size and some different options on that and, and height and setbacks and a variety of different thoughts. So maybe I would say if other people have threshold concerns, like I've just raised now, let's hear those and, and otherwise we can move on to more specific stuff.
Commissioner Jennings?
Right, I, I'm I'm happy to say that my confusion remains. As I understand what the, what the city council said to do was, draft an ADU ordinance, proposed LIP amendment that will describe what we're doing now. Same thing we're doing now, and the same thing we have done since the LIP was adopted. Because I can remember the nine hundred square foot, the discussion about having it be nine hundred square feet back when the coastal commission was debating their own writing of our LCP. So it, it, it just, I guess the point I'm trying to make is it doesn't make much sense to me to say, oh, this is some sort of watershed moment. All it does is put in a different section of the code exactly what we're doing now, as I understand it. And maybe that, that doesn't solve everything. Maybe it, you know, it's, maybe it doesn't solve affordability questions or issues like that. But at the same time, it's not a watershed. It's not a change in anything. And when you consider the fact that the states made it clear, Rob Bata's made it clear, that he's looking for targets. Honeyton Beach has said, fine, we'll be a target, and stepped up and, and let him aim at, aim at them. It seems to me that getting an ADU ordinance on the books, approved by the coastal commission, that does nothing more than it doesn't even change anything, is probably a good idea, just from a political point of view. Now, in, in my own mind, there's no, I, I have no doubt that the proposed ordinance and what we've been doing in the past really doesn't meet the spirit or the details of, of, of the law that was passed, the ADU law that the state passed. And it appears that everybody thinks that, well, we can just sort of rely on that last paragraph L to basically say to the state, the coastal commission's got this under their wing and you're going to leave it alone. And I think that's probably true. I think if we, if we put something together that goes to the coastal commission and the coastal commission says, yeah, this is good, then I don't think there's really much threat that Rob Bata's going to come after the city on, on that basis alone. So I, I guess I'm, I would, I guess what I'm struggling with is, is why not leave well enough alone and pass a document that describes what we've been doing all this time since the adoption of the LIP? I suppose you could turn that argument around and say, why bother to pass anything at all if we're not doing anything more than we've already, what we're already doing? But I think there is a political reason to get it done. And for no, no stronger reason than the fact that, that the city council said this is what they want to do. So I, I guess those are my general thoughts.
That's great. I see Ms. Castillo's got her hand up.
Yes, there's another question that Commissioner Hill raised about looking at cumulative impacts under SEQA. And I just wanted to clarify for the record that adoption of, at this stage, by planning commission or recommendation of adoption to council of a local coastal program is statutorily exempt from SEQA. And this is discussed in the staff report as well. So with these statutory exemptions, cumulative impacts aren't considered. That's only for categorical exemptions. So on that front, we are covered.
Thank you for the clarification on that.
No problem.
You're saying there's no SEQA question at all? We could, we could withstand any SEQA suit, for example. Well, I don't know, just as Craig said, another hundred houses on a road that can't handle it or things like that, or or a thousand acres of ESHA being destroyed, we're totally exempt from any kind of suit by, because we have a lot of contentious.
So the coastal commission, when they verify the plan, will, will not be exempt from SEQA review?
But so that means our plan will be, you'd have to sue them instead of us? If you were a SEQA person and you said, hey, these guys shined us on, they, we, they have to sue the coastal commission on our plan, rather than us being part, a party to that suit?
That I, I do not know.
Yeah, see, I, I understand what Jeff's saying. I just don't want to, we have to also look at, we are changing things here. They're not exactly the same, and they're having a big effect on our, they will have an effect on our planning department, which I'll bring up later. But what I'd like to do, hopefully, is pass on something that doesn't cost us five years and a bunch of lawyers. That's all. And, and we're going to rely on BBK, but you, you, you're going to be the one defending the suit. So I, I, I'd just like to have, I know we're not making a decision, but we should at least pass on or have a legal opinion given to the, given to the city council on that, because SEQA suits can go on for long term.
I see Mr. Leishman's got his hand up. You can, can you help us with this, sir?
Absolutely. We're comfortable with the SEQA.
It's pretty easy to get. Commissioner Peak? You have anything at this time?
I was gonna, I think that it's a, I mean, I'm kind of agree with what Jeff said on this. It's like either, you know, do something because we've been instructed to, or it's not really much different. I, I think that there's some good comments or, you know, things that we should discuss, like, hey, how we're going to approve this? We're going to stay with nine hundred? Are we going to go to twelve hundred? Like, that's a question that I think, you know, we all, you know, need to discuss. I had some concerns about the height and that stuff, and, and I don't know if maybe Joyce or Richard could shed some light on that, just, you know, there's many projects that we have to deal with site plan review and those kind of things. And if we're allowing a structure like this to, to be built, I mean, under the current code, you know, you would have, you're up to this eighteen foot height that, you know, that you don't really, isn't really protected by that. Um, I guess my question to you guys is, or I guess another question would be more to the commissioners is, are we comfortable with that? Height, or do we want to lessen that, or how do we want to look at that?
Well, I I put in, uh, my amendment on my motion was, I'm, I I think a two and twelve pitch roof is enough. On a single family, we don't need them, if if the if the unit is closer to, you know, your neighbor, um, even though it's detached, you don't want. You know, sixteen feet of roof up there if you don't need it, you did the two and twelve pitch or get it, get you by with with getting wiring and HVAC and all your stuff up there and. And it won't be hard to look at, as hard to look at if that's what people are thinking, so. Yeah, I think a two and twelve pitches is is perfect for something like this, and it it's, it doesn't uh, doesn't wreck the, doesn't wreck the neighborhood.
Well, Dennis, you're talking about the slope, but in terms of overall height, I know in a in a prior meeting, you. We all kind of put a pin in was the phrase we used then, the consensus that they should be sixteen feet max and. And I and I'm not sure how how far we got with this, but maybe there was the thought that. Um, if the house was lower than sixteen feet, the sixteen feet would be the max. And if the house was higher than that, the ADU could be up to eighteen feet. Regardless of how much higher the house was. And that um, somewhere in this latest draft, we got in a some notion that. Uh, it could be sloped. If if it were sloped, it could somehow be up to twenty feet, is that, is that what you're pitching now?
I'm I'm looking at kind of, I'm, I'm just thinking of just one unit, I'm. What everything else is kind of spelled out, the state says you can go sixteen feet, I'm sure a lot of houses or ADUs throughout the state will be that. I'm trying to lessen that a little bit, that look a little bit, just just for the neighborhood sake. Um, if it's a story, if it's a two-story, um, there's, there's. Uh, Joyce, you know, spelled it all out, I mean, there's, there's already heights in there that. That the state says you're allowed to go to, and I'm just trying to keep the single-story building height down, so that's where I'm at.
So you're saying the two to twelve slope with a sixteen foot max?
Could you just? Yeah, I I guess I was gonna say like, better explain what a two to twelve slope is for people, so that they understand what that is in terms of a roof.
Well, I mean, it's 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 four, four and twelve is is typically, you know, it's a twenty-five percent pitch, but. Two and twelve kind of flattens it out, it's not a flat roof, it's got a pitch to it, but it doesn't, it isn't. Tough to look at if you're next door to one, if you've got a a roof that's up at sixteen feet and it. Now you've got eight feet of of crawl space up there, or, you know, you've got a foot of Joyce or whatever, so you've got about seven feet up there. That's not really necessary for this, we're trying to um, make this go a bit quicker and easier and look better and um, not. Take the whole city by storm with a bad-looking building if we can help it, I think if we, if we keep them, the pit, the roof down, it'll it'll make a difference for the, for people's neighborhoods.
Do you have any comment?
Uh, yes, you were next, go ahead.
We have to look at maximum heights, there's a lot of, a lot of things here, we have. Three, I think three or four different sizes, I don't know why we need anything more than one size nine hundred. Other than. Richard pointed out that the burnouts got twelve hundred feet. Without any official. It was just Richard, it wasn't a zoning change, twelve hundred feet units that they could bring in and use after the fire, they can be grandfathered. But um, size and height is a big deal now. You you have to remember, in the infinite wisdom of our commission, we have upside-down pitches, okay, we have houses like this, okay? So they can be eighteen feet high. Or twenty feet high on the face and have the roof go down. So we, you know, when we say four to one or whatever we say. We have to change the way we do things so that that could be worse. And and what I'm worried about in general, and there's another thing that adds into this, and this all has to do with the size of an ADU. What's an ADU do for, it's supposed to be. And granted, it's not gonna happen in Malibu, it's supposed to be the ancillary unit for. Grandma or low-income people, that was the intent of the law now. Uh, it ain't gonna happen in Malibu, but. We're allowing, and and this is one thing I want to discuss later, we're allowing basements in ADUs. Okay, so theoretically, you have a twelve hundred square foot. Building, you have twelve hundred square foot basement. And and you can make it twenty-five feet high, which means. Any hippie carpenter can add another floor. So all of a sudden, you got a thirty-six hundred square foot building. With with one or two units in it. Now granted, this is after the fact illegal, but you know, Malibu, it will happen, so. I think we need standards, the other thing we have to consider about height is, I don't see a word in here about this being covered with view ordinances. And. There's no notice to any of the neighbors. So theoretically, the way I read this, you can plunk a twenty-five foot building in front of your neighbor's view, and he doesn't even know it was approved. Uh, so we have to consider those things, that's why I think we should consider as a body a standard. How many houses you ever lived with eighteen foot living rooms and and kitchens and and bedrooms? If they're one story, eighteen foot ceilings. I actually lived in one once, but they're rare, okay? So the only reason to go eight above eighteen feet or eighteen feet is to slide another floor in there on part of it. Uh, so I think we should. Consider a height that makes that way out of code. You have a sixteen foot building and you have a one foot plate. Theoretically, you're not going to be in code, but if you have a twenty-four foot building. As I've demonstrated, you could, with a little bit of work, convert that into a thirty-six hundred square foot. Unit or three units or four units, okay, so. And and then all this stuff about ones a thousand, ones twelve hundred, ones nine hundred. Hundred, ones five hundred. I mean, so one of the, I think it was Howard Redsky asked, oh, let's make this simple, while my head's spinning trying to read this. I'm trying to figure out. The consistency, so I I hope we narrow it down to reasonable what an ADU is supposed to be. And. Try to make it standardized. And. Then I got other problems with notice and views and. Hillside ordinances and all these kind of things that are in our municipal code, okay, that aren't in here, okay, so. I'd like us to start out, if we're gonna start out talking about height and size, just the basics of it. I think we should think about all the different parameters and what that means to the neighbors, to the, to the, to the. Enforcement. And things like that, because they're not, we're not changing those, um.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm gonna jump to Senior Planner Eaton, then I'll go to Commissioner Jennings, and I'll go to Commissioner Peak, and then I'll jump over to Commissioner Hill, so go ahead, Senior Planner Eaton.
Oh, thank you, Chair, um, Smith, so I just wanted a point of clarification, so. As proposed, uh, the LCP is recommending the standard eighteen feet. And if you go above that, up to twenty-four feet flat or twenty feet pitch with a site plan review as it is today. A site plan review would be subject to noticing, I would also be subject to a primary view determination protection, um, just as it is today. So just wanted to make that point of clarification.
Great, how how it, where it's, it says it's subject to review, because. There doesn't appear to be a a noticing period, a notice to the neighbors, so they can so figure it out.
There's a, there's a provision in there that says, you know, if you go above eighteen feet, you'll be subject to a site plan review, which is a different chapter that already exists in the uh, in the code.
Okay, Commissioner Jennings?
Yeah, I. I I kind of like where this is going, I think we ought to sit down and we ought to talk about height and we ought to talk about size, and then maybe we can actually get some decisions about those two, but I. Before we get there, I wanted to mention one of the reasons why we should pass this. It it is, I said it was, it was essentially the same as as what we have now, but there's one, to my mind, one huge difference. Right now, as you know, um, because of the. Headbutting with the Coastal Commission, um, we do not have any regulation of short-term rentals. The one thing that this uh, state law does allow us to do is to impose a no short-term rental. Uh, restriction on uh, these ADU units, so there's. A positive effect from uh, from getting this done, I mean, it's not exactly the same, it's actually better. Having said that, I I suggest we didn't, we we do talk about heights, get a feeling of where the where we are and and try to get a straw. Vote done and then move on to another subject.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Peak?
Um, well, I was gonna, uh, that was my question was about STRs, so. Um, are are we all in consensus that we do not want STRs to be allowed in these?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um, are we in consensus on uh, height of sixteen feet per single story and twenty-four feet for a two-story?
No.
Uh, I I would have asked, I would ask Joyce to go over what the limitations of our discretion are on that issue. I I I personally would support that, but um, I'm not sure that that overdoes what we can do.
I think that's what the, or Joyce, go ahead.
Um, just just again, as a point of clarification, there are two documents uh, that the planning commission is concerned uh, considering. One is the municipal code, which has to be consistent with state law, that's where the sixteen feet is and allows you to go up to twenty-five feet. So that is consistent uh, with state law. In the LCP, it's. What is allowed now under a second unit, and that's eighteen feet up to, you know, twenty-four or. Twenty-eight with an LCP, so there is no, um, if if the planning commission wanted to lower the height, um. From the LCP, not from the um, the MMC. Standards that are in there related to height are the minimum allowed by state, so the city would have to allow those and the MMC. Keeping in mind that. For an attached detached and converted accessory building, they'd be processed under the. LCP, which means they would be subject to the existing code. Uh, for second units, which would allow up to eighteen feet. So the planning commission has uh, discussed in the past, uh, in the past lowering um, that from eighteen feet. And so um, the planning officials just have to keep in mind then that that would mean um. If they are changing the second unit regulations, which can go to eighteen, because the second unit regulations go away. And so for new dwelling units, accessory dwelling units, they would be limited to whatever the uh, planning mission recommends.
That sixteen feet though is the minimum we could recommend, right?
Uh, and uh, that is in the MMC to.
If we want to be consistent between the LIP and the MMC, we could say sixteen feet according to state law.
In the LCP, yes.
Both, both.
Do we, do we have? Do we have con- consensus amongst us that we should do sixteen feet? As the single story?
I agree.
Sixteen sixteen feet for a si- for a single family?
Si- so a single, well, single story.
Single story, I'm sorry, single story, right?
Yeah.
And 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 what, twenty, uh, just site plan review for anything for for two-story?
Well, I was gonna say site plan review for anything over sixteen feet, or does it have to? I mean, I think that even if it said site plan review for anything over eighteen feet, if we're limiting. Single story to sixteen feet, I don't think you can fit two stories in sixteen feet.
No, you can't.
So by default, you would require site plan review for anything that's taller than that.
Taller than sixteen.
Yeah, but then the.
You could say, you could say sixteen feet if the house is sixteen or lower, if the house is eighteen already, then maybe you say you get up to eighteen.
But you.
In other words, that's as tall as the house up to eighteen.
Well, your grandfather.
I think, I think that it's better just to be consistent and say moving forward at sixteen feet.
Sure.
Okay, and then. I wanna, I wanna add one thing to to your thought process, remember. The most this thing can be is twelve hundred, well, we haven't gotten to the sizes, but.
Let's not, yeah.
Let's, let's.
Nine hundred, now this has to do with the height, let's say it's nine hundred. You want two stories, essentially, if you have the two-thirds rule, which I assume we're not getting rid of. Uh, you're talking a rather tiny second floor. In the hundred, you know, two hundred square feet or something, um. On a tiny building.
You're correct.
So.
Unless, of course, you attach a garage.
That's why you need the site plan review and all this, because I think they're gonna be super rare.
Okay, now, is in regards to that, that second limit where the MMC says, or the state law says is sixteen twenty-five, but then our LCP says eighteen twenty-four, but we're gonna make that just sixteen across the board. For that second number, do we want it to be twenty-four, or can we not make it twenty-four because of what the state law says?
No, in the LCP, you can uh, select any height that you want, maximum height, you could. Say that they all have to be one story at sixteen feet, or you could allow sixteen feet for one story, and then the site find review above that up to any. Um, any height that the uh, pine commission wants to.
What is our maximum height to now, it's twenty-four, right?
Uh, two, tw- twenty-eight for.
Twenty-eight with a pitched roof, twenty-four with a flat roof.
Yeah, why don't we just use that language?
That's fine, so we're gonna say it can be.
So we do not, we're not gonna say anything then, because it's gonna be what it is now, right?
Exactly, so we're, so we're not, so the only thing we're doing then is just being consistent, sixteen feet, single story. Anything above that, we're defaulting to our existing language that requires site plan review and the the limits are set. And then we're uh, we're assured, Joyce, that this, any of these that are uh, the two-story, they must meet that two-thirds rule.
Yes, um, the staff is not ma- make making any recommendations to change that provision, so they would have to meet all of the other standards in the LCP. Including the two-thirds rule.
Okay, now, uh, just one specific question on that, if you have a ADU and you have a garage, which is not subject to that nine hundred square feet, that's part of that building. And you want to build a second story, for the first story, do you calculate the garage as being part of the first story? For the two-thirds rule?
I would have to um. Refer to Tyler um, on, or Richard, what is the, how do you? Staff handle that now?
Currently, if it's attached, then it would be counted as part of the first floor.
But it's not not going towards the nine hundred square feet, but it, but as terms of when you make your two-thirds calculation, you include that?
Correct, because it would be all, it's it, the the two-thirds is about the structure, so uh, right now, that's how we do it.
So I just, I just want to be. Clear that, I guess, quite what I'm getting at is the only way that I really see somebody going for the two-story. Is in the event where the garage is attached, does, am I, do I have the correct train of thought on that?
Probably, but I would.
Probably.
Well, no, I mean, yeah, yeah, I I I think that probably, Brad, it's unpractical. If you, if if you apply the two-thirds rule and you don't have the the ability to use the garage as part of the first floor. But you know, I mean, in 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 in. In almost everywhere in Malibu, none of this is really gonna be an issue, it seemed to me, but there there. There are parcels, there are very large parcels that don't have view issues, that don't have, you know, there's no reason why to restrict people from not doing it. Assuming that they can get away with the, you know, all the other development standards that Malibu opposes.
Okay, and then the next item that seemed like a hotter topic was the.
Size.
Size.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Pete, can I just say one thing?
I would like to propose that we.
We could.
Hang on. Vice Chair, let let Senior Planner Eaton say what he was gonna say, please.
Well, because Commissioner Peak, uh, I think you guys came to consensus, is consensus, if I'm not mistaken, that sixteen feet was gonna be the standard, right? And then anything above that would be subject to SPR, however, the language in the code for two-thirds is. uh eighteen feet. And so do you mean two thirds should be above sixteen feet? Because if so, we have to probably include that language in the LCP amendment.
I I don't think so, because the language says if it's over eighteen feet, you count it as a second floor. Okay, this is gonna be under eighteen feet in all cases.
So the the two floor, the two thirds rule would only apply to having a second story, and you couldn't have a second story unless you went higher than eighteen feet. So the existing code, I believe, would would apply.
You know, you know, I I gotta tell you, I gotta suggest that that refer this back be to Tyler or Richard, because the language in the LIP for the two thirds rule is completely different than the language in the MMC for the two thirds rule. They're not consistent and uh, you 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 could be creating a real mess. Richard, do you got a thought on it?
You 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 are correct, Commissioner Jennings, there is there is a difference in one of them uses the the second floor, if you will, and then the other talks about the portion of the building above eighteen. So definitely, we could, we we'd be glad to look at that and make sure and make certain that you know, they're not an issue and we could follow the intention. Uh, if, because it sounds to me kind of like things for Tyler jumped in there, I think we're hearing a recommendation uh, the that's something you want to see applied to these, and so we could definitely work on it. And then I think Tyler, we'd also have to look at the sixteen versus eighteen foot. So we'd have to to make that. If the recommendation is sixteen feet, look at what tweaks we need there.
Okay, so you can come back, we can be have a consensus sixteen feet that that qualifies and is standardized with the regular municipal code. Uh, eighteen feet. Now, there's nothing to say as as far as I can tell. If we limit it to sixteen feet, that doesn't mean that a non-ADU can't be eighteen. Okay? Uh, it's just, this is
A primary dwelling.
Yeah, primary dwelling.
Correct.
And so it's pretty easy to come back with language that says ADU sixteen houses uh eighteen and uh, the two thirds rule would never count on the first floor on the on the uh ADUs, because they can't go that high and regular houses can go to eighteen. So you're never gonna get a second floor situation on an ADU without an STR. Or site plan review, right?
So so then where are we at on the size of these? Do we want to stay nine hundred feet across the board? Is I I'm
I I prefer that because for several reasons. We we have a nine hundred is, I I remember, and we have a nine hundred, a thousand, a twelve hundred and a five hundred in this whole mix. Now, the five hundred, I don't think we want to change, because that's internal. Okay, it's outside of what, you know, nobody's gonna take twelve hundred out of their middle of their house, or maybe somebody would, but uh so there's not a huge difference between, what I would suggest is we say nine hundred with grandfathering Woolsey fire units that have a permit to have a twelve hundred square foot temporary building on. And that's, I think, Richard, at one time, you said there was like forty four of them or something. That's not, you know, the whole city. That's just these particular, particular burnouts. And then we don't have you know, I had this, I had that arguments and everything else. Now, the reason I'm saying pick pick a standard and probably should be nine hundred is these are supposed to be affordable, et cetera, and we don't know in the future how many bedrooms these things are gonna have, okay? So why say why make the the person come in and say, well, I want two bedrooms now? Or I only, I want one bedroom now, but I gotta, if I then I'm gonna have two bedrooms, I get another three hundred square feet. It doesn't make sense. Um, just make it standard. I have every other guest house in Malibu that I know of, guest house, not ancillary units, is seven fifty. It used to be the code. I don't know what it is now. Mine's seven fifty. Um, so nine hundred is a a jump.
Nine hundred.
Go ahead, Commissioner Jennings.
Nine hundred is what it is and has been since the adoption of the LIP. Um, when we initially had this discussion back before the Woolsey Fire, uh, I was inclined to kind of agree with John on the idea that twelve hundred was a little bit too large for a guest house. Um, since then, I've lived in an eight hundred square foot house uh for the last, uh, what, three years or so? And um adding four hundred square foot doesn't, isn't gonna make a lot of difference. I mean, in mine, it's my wife, my dog, and me. If I there was another person in there, eight hundred would be very, very tight. And I think twelve hundred is a better solution, uh, particularly since we have those people who who relied on uh, on the twelve hundred square foot and putting down the the manufactured homes or mobile homes, which cannot be altered to be reduced in size. So that that'd be my position. I I'm willing to go for the twelve hundred.
Well, that's why I go to grandfather again.
Um, Commissioner Hill.
Two thoughts. One, one, the first question, I know that we can't uh, express it as a proportion of lot size, but maybe we asked this before, um, but could we not say something like uh, you'd allow the twelve hundred foot on parcels over an acre, nine hundred feet between half an acre and an acre, and anything less than that, a parcel less than half an acre, you'd make the maximum four or five hundred, depending on if you want to harmonize it with the JADU. Could could we do that kind of tiered approach? Or is that too close to saying it's based on proportion of lot size?
Joyce, you have you have an answer, I bet.
I I just um, I just wanted to make sure um that the direction that the planning commission is giving staff is 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 for the LCP only and not the MMC.
Right.
Yeah, we're not really talking about
When you're coming up with I'm sorry, when you come up with uh sizes and heights that relates to the regulations in the LCP, not the MMC.
We're talking about detached buildings now.
I I I think we're all aware that that none of those are ever gonna be built under the MMC.
Okay.
It's all gonna be done.
But so so is 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 that an option to have kind of a tiered approach to say, you know, over an acre, you get a twelve hundred? If it's half an acre to an acre, you get the nine hundred. If it's less than half an acre, you get something like a four or five hundred.
Yeah. From my position, I certainly we could do it, but my question would be, why do it? We've got the setback requirements, we've got the total development square foot limitations that go on. And as a as a practical matter, the only limitation that exists in the LIP is total development square footage, because uh, as you saw by that uh 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 project that um oh, gosh, who's the architect? Uh, Lester came up with. Um, you got your house, and then you've got the cabana by the pool and the seashed and the yoga studio, and by the time you get it all done, total development square footage is all accounts. So uh, if you, why put a limitation? Why why make it so complicated as you get five hundred or eight hundred or nine hundred? Well, you could also throw in the sea, the the she shed and the yoga studio and everything else, but because those aren't included in all this ADU stuff. Um, I would think that 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 the development standards we have, if if they're good enough for all of the accessory buildings that people throw in, that it would be good enough for this.
The reason, the 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 answer why might be um, that fire spreads much more quickly and efficiently via houses and structures, dense dense structures than it does via vegetation or anything else. It's 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 the houses that burn down the neighborhoods um, as they burn. So if you're talking about someplace like uh Malibu West, for example, I I don't know how big the lots are, but they're they're relatively small. If you suddenly made the allowed, e- even with the setbacks we have, we're talking about making things more dense. I don't know.
It'd be over, it'd be over their TDSF.
Well, let me ask you a question. Uh, you're talking about still having this limitation on size of the unit, not the total TDSF. So I agree with you, smaller units. The smaller lots are gonna get smaller units, because they're gonna use up their TDSF. Uh, I I agree with that. I think the answer is over an acre and under an acre or an acre to whatever, to a half an acre. What I don't want is on the top end having huge ADUs, so you're still gonna have that nine hundred square foot maximum.
Um, or twelve.
Or twelve or whatever, uh, or you could, you know, like Craig said, twelve for the big, big boy lots and uh, nine hundred for the mediums and and nine hundred for, if you can fit it in on the rest.
Uh, my my inclination is that that all those determinations of of acre, half acre, quarter acre, whatever it is, those are all just artificial and and, you know, they they make you 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 have to do di- distinctions like that, but they really are arbitrary. We've got such stringent controls on TDSF and setbacks and all the rest of it, that I think that that those are gonna handle the problem perfectly well. I mean, in in Malibu West, you're not, if, remember, we had that whole debate about the part, the the people in the back that wanted to build one, the one, and they weren't able to get it done because of the setback requirements. All those requirements are still gonna be in place.
Yeah, well, that's gonna have an access issue. Uh, Joyce, um how does this, does this conflict with anything? Uh, I wanna try to be as consistent with the MMC and the LIP.
The only the only complexion would be that we're changing it from nine hundred to twelve hundred. And that any
Yeah, and so are we gonna change the MMC to twelve hundred? I I
No.
No, so so why would we want to have bigger ones for
Jeff just told you why. He's just lived in one.
Oh, yeah, but I remember, this is not a primary residence, and this is his primary residence for the last Okay?
I I don't know. I come to this
I also wanna just re- remember, you know, that's six hundred thousand dollars and five hundred bucks a foot, which everybody tells me is, oh, that's cheap in Malibu, okay? These are supposed to be low income. Uh, so
Okay, let's let's see something here. So are we, are we to a point where we can say we're gonna keep our roofs at the at the sixteen and the twenty five?
We did that.
And then are we close enough where we could take a vote now for a twelve hundred square foot unit as opposed to a nine hundred square foot? And while we're at it, are we, we're going to allow, we're gonna go with the four foot setbacks front and side?
Now, we should go on a different issue.
Separate question. But let's let's go with the size right now.
Now, now, I wanna add one other, throw a monkey wrench into the size. The way this is written, the way this is written, you're gonna have a basement. And it's also written that you don't count it if it's unfinished. Well, give me a break. I mean, who's gonna build a basement and finish it if you don't have to count it? And if you finish it, you do. And how long is it gonna take to put in an extra bedroom down there? So apparently basements are allowed without being counted. Is that true?
No, if if somebody proposed a detached ADU and had a basement, uh, we would count the size of that basement toward their either nine hundred or twelve hundred.
Would you get a thousand, would you get a thousand?
Yeah, so, sorry, to answer your question, Commissioner Mazza, um, the basement might not count towards TDSF, however, it would count as habitable area to the ADU. And so they're still limited to the nine hundred in that scenario. If that makes sense.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so why are we why are we making basements? It might not count for TDSF. Here's one of the things, when I read this, that got me. You have habitable space and TDSF, and they kind of switch back and forth. Why do we use habitable space? Why don't we use like what we always do, TDSF? Why do we create new thing?
If we did, then perhaps what you're saying could be true in that you could get a thousand square foot basement, you know, without counting it towards anything. So that was our way to, uh, I think it already exists, right, Joyce? That language in the current second unit uh, that basement is included as part of the interior habitable space that would get counted towards the nine hundred.
Okay, and that'll be defined, that'll be defined somewhere in this order.
It's it already, yeah, it it already is.
And and just to clarify, and this goes back to a prior meeting, I know what I my note here is that Commissioner Jennings wanted to the area to be describing floor area, not necessarily TDSF, which counts the walls and all the other development. So the the notion would be if we're talking about a twelve hundred or a nine hundred, we're talking about the floor that it and and the code has different terms, habitable space, living area. Those are both not TDSF. I think we should be consistent and use one of those terms, floor area, habitable area or living area consistently. That would be the area of that's allowable, the nine hundred or the twelve, whatever it turns out to be. And then when you're counting TDSF towards your overall site and how this is contributing to your total development, then yes, you would count the TDSF with the walls and everything else in the in that calculation.
Why make two counts? Why can't we just use TDSF? Instead of living area, it's it's the thickness of the wall, but you're now telling the the applicant and the staff, go figure it out on the inside of the wall and figure it out on the outside of the wall and use the TDSF for the maximum and use the living area for the for the ADU, and you just made this huge complication for the thickness of a wall.
Well, we 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 already have these terms, habitable area, living area, and floor area, so let's leave one.
But where Hang on, guys. Hang on, hang on, Mr. Leishman.
You're muted.
There you go.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Just a, just a reminder that while we're not focused on it, the MMC draft that you have before you, the principal driver of that is compliance with state law. And it does use terms like livable area or non-livable area, but that's because it reflects state law and we're not inclined to depart from the the statutory terms. I recognize that this folk, this conversation is really, for the most part, focused on the LCP amendments. And as I understand it, the primary driver for the draft that you have before you is the council's direction that it um stick as closely as possible to the existing uh second unit regulations. So while, of course, you're free to recommend variations from that, just know that that's why you have the terms that you have in front of you. Thank you.
So what term are we using then already for a a second unit floor area?
So Tyler, can you, uh, Richard, can you uh weigh in on this? Generally, um, I'm used to using total development square footage as the total development square footage on the entire lot, not for the size of an individual unit, which is square footage, but I don't know how uh staff is addressing that currently.
We currently are sticking with TDSF. We do everything we're, per the code, the code requires us to count to the faces of exterior walls. Uh, and I think a- as Todd mentioned here, this is an effort to um create some consistency with the state law. And then, as Tyler mentioned, we were looking to identify the basements in a way that would allow, would not allow them to result in a unit that becomes, uh, you know, an extra thousand square feet.
Mr. Peak.
So so Richard, I apologize, and just just so, um, so when when we say that a second unit can be nine hundred square feet, do we say a second unit can be nine hundred total development square footage? Is that the, how we defined it?
Yes.
As opposed to, okay.
Yeah, that's under the current codes, the way it's written in the LCP and the MMC. That that is the the measurement, the TDSF and exterior walls.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Hang on, hang on, Vice Chair, Commissioner Peak.
So the, I mean, I guess I think the the conflict lies within how TDSF is calculated on an entire project, because a basement a thousand square feet is exempt. Right? And then you have this fifty percent calculation of a basement that's over a thousand square feet. Right? So if someone, the, I think that what we need to put in there is that specifically for the ADU, you can build a basement, but that basement is counted towards that nine hundred or whatever, twelve hundred, wherever we decide on, square footage. If you're looking at the entire project, while that basement square footage may be exempt, just specifically if you're isolated and looking at the ADU, that is included. And that covers the loophole that we're discussing.
I I I think that that's that's exactly the idea that, at least that I'm agreeing with, that we try to transmit to the city council. But keep in mind, this is just recommendations of ideas to the city council. We don't have to word This is just recommendations of ideas to the city council. We don't have to wordsmith this thing. Uh, we just have to make sure that the idea gets across.
Uh, Craig, I, I just want to add that. I assume we, to stay with Mr. Lishman's advice. We have very few, very few of these units that are going to be. Under the MMC. Most of them will be under the coastal, so we can keep. The term total development square foot in the coastal. And if necessary, you can go through the whole process of calculating it twice. On, uh, because we're not going to change code on the, the TDSF, you can calculate. Yeah, you can have a guest house this size, living area. And then recalculated for the whole, you know, for the whole, whole, uh, lot, TDSF, just on those MMC units. So I, I assume we can keep the word total development square footage in the LIP and. If Mr. Lishman says we should. Use, use that term and then we, we still have, have to recalculate for TDSF no matter what. But that'll be very few units, as I understand it.
I'm sorry, yeah, my share, um. The, in the municipal code, total development square footage is not taken into consideration.
Nor can it be.
No, we get that.
It is, it is taken into consideration on the development on the parcel.
Yes, the other development, the non-ADU development. You're correct.
You know, now am I, are you saying that I've got a parcel that says I can have three thousand square feet? But I can have forty-two hundred if I want an ADU? Because that violates everything we've ever done.
It's kind of a moot point because anything that adds to TDSF. Any, any attached ADU, any detached ADU, anything that creates more coverage of the lot. Will be handled under the LCP.
Whatever go to this MMC.
You're always. Go to the MMC for a converted ADU inside the primary dwelling or for a junior ADU inside the primary dwelling.
So it would.
The, the interior ones will, will now be measured in livable area and the exterior ones will be measured in TDSF.
But that's a moot point because you're not making the building any bigger. So moot point. So if we use TDSF. In our LIP. No harm, no foul, right? We don't have to calculate it twice. It's just no harm, no foul.
Right.
Yeah, can we make a decision on the twelve hundred square feet or eight hundred or nine hundred square feet?
I, I prefer nine and I, you know, why don't we make it, uh, eleven hundred?
Because twelve hundred's our number. So, okay, so we, I think we all agree on the roof. Well. I don't particularly care for the roof thing, but I'm going to go with this, um, with, with the height of the, of the roof. Sixteen and twenty-five, and in the size, we'll take a, we'll take a vote now, or we'll take a straw vote. For a twelve hundred square foot unit, so.
Sixteen and twenty, sixteen and twenty-four on the roof, right?
Yeah, Chair Smith, can we clarify the, um, height limits? It's sixteen feet and then, um, the next bump after that is twenty-four feet.
Okay, I'm, thank you, Commissioner Hill. Okay, and, and Ms. Castillo, thank you. Okay, so sixteen, twenty-four, we agree on, on that. Now we'll just take, we'll take a quick vote here on a twelve hundred square foot unit as opposed to a nine hundred. So. We'll start off with, uh, Commissioner Hill, how he feels about that.
Uh, in the absence of any more custom conditioning criteria, I would limit it to, if it's just one number, I'd call it nine hundred.
Commissioner Peak.
I would say, uh, twelve hundred because I think the homeowner should be able to dictate that on their property.
Commissioner Ma- Vice Chair Mazza.
Nine hundred.
Commissioner Jennings.
Twelve hundred.
And I think twelve hundred too. So, um, can we take, uh, can we take a roll call on, on the, on, go ahead, Commissioner Peak?
I just, we talked about it and then we were kind of all on the same page and we kind of glazed over it, just in specifically in regards to the basement. We are on complete consensus and agreement that a guest house. Or, I'm sorry, an ADU can be twelve hundred square feet and that would include the square footage of a basement.
Correct.
Correct, okay?
Yes.
And, and with a gar- with a garage, this now makes a structure that's bigger than my entire house.
Garage is separate, that's correct.
Senior Planner, uh, Eaton, I see your hand up.
So I'm just taking notes. I just want to make sure I get this, it all right. The basements issue, it's got, uh, Commissioner Peak, I. Uh, thought that you had said that the basement should be counted towards, uh, TDSF for the entire lot as well. Is that correct?
No, no, because if. Uh, a basement up to a, it's a thousand square feet and then it carries a fifty percent above that, right?
Right.
That's why, that's why I brought that up.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
You're looking isolated at the guest house or the ADU, sorry. You, you got twelve hundred square feet, you could. Build a thousand square feet of as a basement and two hundred square feet at ground level, you know, whatever. I don't know, some people, weird basements. Um, but when you're looking at the whole property, you would still get your exemption for your basement, right? I, I think that what it allows. The, the downside to that, and I think that everybody should be aware of this. Is that let's say you had a property where you only had. And then you were only able to build five hundred square feet of additional TDSF. Okay, so you said, I'm going to build a five hundred square foot ADU. You could technically build. Five hundred and, and you didn't have a basement on your main house. You could build a thousand square foot basement. With a five hundred square feet on top and you would still meet your TDSF requirement for the property.
Right, and we understand what I'm saying?
But, yeah, but, but.
I know that it's not likely, but I'm just saying that you know that we're going to see that.
But the impacts are of, of, of underground stuff is not that big a deal anymore.
Got to remember, it gets really complicated. I, I assume we're going to decide. We're not changing the basement thousand foot credit for the total property.
No, we're not, no.
We're not, because, because the minute you go bigger, then you couldn't have two hundred square feet. Above ground and twelve, twelve hundred below because it's not under the, the pad. Uh, under the footprint, so therefore it's a cellar part of it. And then you get into all this rigmarole. So if we just keep our, our thousand square foot credit for the whole property, don't change anything there. I agree with your proposal. You got accounted for the guest house, for the guest house maximums. Totally agree. We don't have to mess with the basement rules at all.
I'm just making sure that everyone's, you know.
Yeah.
You could, there's, there's very easily a situation where a property only has. An additional five hundred square feet of developable square footage left to build an ADU. And they come in and they go and apply and they build a thousand square foot with five hundred foot basement and the five hundred foot basement is exempt. And now you have a thousand square foot.
We've agreed on that, I think.
That's okay, you can do that.
Now let me ask you a question. In Skylar's scenario, do we have a minimum size of an ADU? You got, you got a hundred square feet left. You're going to squeeze in whatever you can get to get every square inch of your property.
There's, there's a two hundred and twenty square foot efficiency.
No, I'm just saying, could I build a living quarters of a hundred and twelve square feet?
If you were in New York City, the answer would be yes.
I, I, I thought we had a minimum.
No windows.
Drucker and the code somewhere.
I think it's, it's two hundred and twenty feet.
Two hundred and twenty feet, okay. Okay.
Mister, Mister Leishman, Mister Leishman. Leishman.
Thank you, Chair. The minimum is two hundred and twenty on the MMC side.
There you go.
LIP or the LCP, um, you can determine what's appropriate. But I don't.
There's no state law that says you can't live in a ninety square foot house.
Well, yes, there is. Um.
Okay.
An efficiency unit is kind of the floor of what the state allows. And it is two twenty, except that state law authorizes a city to act by ordinance to affirmatively drop it. Down to as low as one fifty. Um, so if the city were to, if the city council were to proactively drop it to one fifty, it could be that low. In the absence of that, and I don't believe that Malibu has done that. Um, then it's two twenty today under state law.
Okay, well.
My point was that under the LCP, if you think that three hundred or four hundred is more appropriate for coastal protection. You can consider that, but I don't think that's a topic.
Okay, well, I, I would ask Skylar on his twelve hundred, whoever had that. That we have a range, twelve hundred down to. Four hundred. I don't think people should be living in three hundred square feet because this has to include a kitchen and a bathroom. To be a livable thing and you, you put a bathroom and a kitchen in three hundred square feet. And you're sleeping on a refrigerator.
Thank you. You just raised an issue. I don't think it does have to include a kitchen, does it? It, can it be a guest house or granny flat the way it used to be?
It can't be an ADU without a kitchen.
Really?
You're correct, Vice Chair. That is true.
Yeah, okay.
So I would say, I would ask for consensus to say the size can be twelve hundred down to four hundred.
I think the way that you would say it is the guest house shall be between X and Y, so.
Yeah, four hundred, twelve hundred, whatever that is.
I, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, I'd say three hundred.
Tiny house, baby.
How big's your ba- how big's your, your bathroom?
Two ninety. I call and raise you.
But bathrooms.
I'm going to propose four hundred for starters and, and see if we get consensus on that and then we'll.
I, I agree. I think four hundred, twelve hundred is great. I think sixteen to twenty-four on the roof, so. And the basements are, we know what the basements are, so.
Okay, fine.
Let's take, let's take.
I gave four hundred.
Let's take a vote.
We, we, we don't have to formally.
We don't have to vote. These are all going to come up.
Yeah. We have consensus. I, I have another size based question before we move on to other issues. Um, we, we have this twelve hundred in, um, I guess we have the twelve hundred, okay. There's a rule that comes from state law, uh, that says that the ADU cannot be more than fifty percent of the, the main house. In terms of size. I'm wondering about a house like my house or others that, my house is about fifteen hundred square feet, so if it burned in a fire. Anybody else with a small house, their house burns. I'd want to build a twelve hundred square foot ADU to ha- to do like what, what Jeff has done. But, but under this rule, it sounds like I could only build a seven hundred and fifty square foot one because my house is fifteen hundred. Is that, is, could there be an exception on that for?
Your house burned down, Craig.
For the disaster rebuild, could there be an exception that says, yeah, you could have a twelve hundred if it's your, you know.
But you wouldn't, you wouldn't be using a disaster rebuild because you're building another building. Above that and you can have whatever your lot TDSF will take.
Yeah, but you, but you can't build an ADU, you can't build an ADU without there being a main dwelling house.
Right, so you can, you can have a trailer or a modular home according to Richard's. Leeway on rebuilds as long as you have a building permit.
That can, that can then become permanent according to what they did with the Woolies, right? So.
Right.
The twelve hundred.
If I want to build a twelve hundred to live in while I'm spending five years to rebuild my house that burned down. But I, and, and then I can rebuild my, say, fifteen hundred square foot house, add ten percent, whatever. Then suddenly my twelve hundred square foot temporary housing is no longer, I can't convert it, you're saying.
No, 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 no. The way I look at it is you can, you're going to have to get a CDP for your, your cancer unit, okay? So you can build your house, you, you're going to file a CDP for your house and you're going to have the, the twelve hundred square foot. Temporary unit, you convert into a full unit on your permit.
But I can't convert it to a full if only half the size is allowed.
For what it's, for what it's worth, Craig, I, I agree with you. I've never understood where that fifty percent limitation. What it's, what it was founded on other than just, I guess, aesthetics. And I, I agree with you. I don't think that, that, that limitation ought to exist.
It's apparently it's state law of some kind. I think that's.
It's, it's, it's in the, uh, the ADU, uh, provisions, isn't it? Uh, help us out, attorneys.
I- i- is there no way to make an exception for this under disaster rebuild conditions?
If you rebuilt your house, would you want it to be fifteen hundred square feet or would you build it bigger?
I'd do plus ten.
The question is for Todd as to whether or not we have to make this ordinance.
Yeah.
Or this recommendation to council include this, this portion of what the state is recommended.
Yeah.
Chair. The right to jump in.
Go ahead.
Um, the statute does talk about fifty percent restriction, the statute. And, and that's really only pertinent to the MMC. You can drop it out of your, um, LCP. Uh, I don't know off the top of my head what's in the current second unit regulations, if there's. A fifty percent of the primary house rule on the, on coastal regulation side. But as for the MMC that's in there, but state law also always allows a city to be more generous. To ADU development, so if a city could in its municipal code. Um, choose not to impose that fifty percent requirement. It's really not going to be relevant in the city. Because anything like that would be handled under the LCP.
So what does the LCP say about the fifty percent rule? Is there anything? Guest houses can't be more than fifty percent?
Does not say.
It, the fifty percent is for attached ADUs, so it's fifty percent of the main, uh, dwelling unit. As Todd indicated, that is in the MMC and we carried it over to the LCP. Uh, because at the time we were thinking that if someone had a twelve hundred square foot house, existing house. And then wanted a twelve hundred square foot, uh, ADU. You would essentially have almost a duplex and you have two structures out there, um, at the same size. And so that's why we had recommended carrying the fifty percent over.
So there is no fifty percent restriction on detached structures, period.
That does, that's as proposed. Um, currently nine hundred is, is the limit for ADUs across the board. In the existing code.
Right, without regard to the fifty percent.
Uh, I, I think the, the question for us then is do we want to remove that condition or not?
Well, if it's, if it's just for an attached or an, or, then it doesn't make sense that you'd need it for the disaster rebuild. Um, criteria because there's nothing to attach it to at that point. You're just making a separate unit. So it wouldn't be under the MMC at all. I don't think it would just be a CDP.
Yeah, and in your area, Craig, uh, you got to get a CDP.
Yeah.
Okay. No matter what, so it, it's kind of a moot point. It's not going to ever happen.
Yeah, if it doesn't, if it doesn't apply to external units, then, then it's, then it's not relevant.
Okay.
So, so we're not going to apply that to the ADUs that are a separate structure?
Right.
Okay, and then we're, we all agree on that, correct?
We do.
It, it would apply only to attached ADUs. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay, alright.
What's next?
Multifamily.
Well, I think we should stay with, before we get to multifamily, we should finish regular family, don't you?
Sure.
What do you got, John? What, what's next?
Well, there's a whole bunch of stuff on, I'm very worried about public safety and, and I want to make sure. Because I, when I think of this, uh. We asked for Public Safety Commission to give us an idea of, uh, say, for example, escape routes, so. Joyce, as it stands now, the language that we're, we're. Do we have to decide to adopt the county language on having two ways out to a highway? And how wide the road has to be and parking. One of the things I'm worried about is, for example, Craig will tell you, his street's eleven feet wide. Okay, and if we say, okay, you can park on the street. You, you're going to die. And this thing about. Gee, I'm going to have sprinklers on the inside of my ADU. That has nothing to do with your house burning down. Um, and you all remember the picture of people trying to evacuate Malibu. With a twelve mile line of cars to Santa Monica, so. We have to look at, number one, parking. If the lot's big enough and, and, and most of the ones up in the mountains are, but we have to look at the, the ones that aren't. We have to have the county language on the standard for the road and. The fire department has to get there and the people have to be able to get out. Uh, uh, for example. Trancas Canyon in the fire, and I can't remember what year, but I'm sure Jeff knows. It was like right before we approved the Trancas Market. We went to this huge discussion and gave them an easement behind the gas station so they'd have two ways out because they couldn't get out. They had a line all the way up the hill uh with houses burning down at the time. So those are important things. And and I don't think the way this is written where it says, gee, uh, I can't remember exactly what it was, but you you don't have to have parking if you're, if you're in the boonies. Uh.
I I I don't think that's what it says, John. I I think it says that for the MMC. But I think what's happened for the LIP is that we've just maintained the parking requirements. So we've always had. Correct. So.
So you put it in a case.
There are no reduced parking requirements under the LIP. It's just under the MMC.
Okay, so if you're, if you're under the LIP, you've got to provide a a a parking space on premises for the tenants.
Correct.
Not two, not not a garage, just a parking space. Is that right? Or is that just?
Uncovered parking space.
Yes, one, one parking space per ADU unit and it can be uncovered.
Okay, so we we agree that they have to, if they're LIPs, they have to provide parking off street. Okay? Um.
But hang on, Vice Chair. Uh, Joyce, what's the state telling us we have to do? Or don't do?
The the state in the MMC um does not um have any restrictions on the number of um parking spaces other than the one per ADU unit. Um, they do, under the state law, allow you to convert your garage and um not replace that parking. Um, and that's what we're trying to do in the municipal code. I mean, I'm sorry, in the LCP is require that any garage conversion, the parking has to be replaced onsite.
So do we need consensus on that?
Already.
To be replaced or, I mean, you've written it in, but do we ever have consensus on that? Will that be in the final product? Or the product we're moving forward?
Senior, senior planner Eaton, go ahead.
I I just wanted to mention, uh, what Joyce also mentioned in her presentation was um that this is where the Coastal Commission specifically said that we should, you know, perhaps consider uh some leniency uh specifically if a project didn't um have any impacts to coastal resources. So no ESHA, no scenic impacts, any chapter in the LIP, if there wasn't something specific, uh, then perhaps we should consider uh reducing the parking standard. I don't know how much it would actually change for us because these lots that we're talking about are typically big and they probably have plenty of um space, but um I just wanted to bring that to your attention for discussion in case you guys wanted to talk about it here.
Well, I think we should because they aren't all typically big. We've got a lot of T uh transfer development lots, they get ease that are tiny. Okay, and
Yeah, I.
And we have like now Crow Canyon is not a Malibu, but you go up there and there are forty-five hundred square foot lots because it used to be a Boy Scout camp. So we don't know that you can't do that, but one car on a road will cause the fire department massive headaches. And this is public safety. This is something that I can't imagine. You know, we could say on lots under X, you don't have to provide parking, but we're talking big lots. And we need clear roads to evacuate and we need, and and people have died. Well, people died going up Crow Canyon, uh, two firemen. So um because they got trapped. So we have to consider that because, as I said, Craig's Road's eleven feet wide.
Hey.
I I I I agree with John. It's a concern. And I think what my suggestion would be that we leave it the way it is with the with without uh offering uh reduced parking restrictions. Send it to the council. My thought is that, you know, coastal staff is not the Coastal Commission. Write it up, send it to them. If the Coastal Commission insists on it, then it's time to worry about it. But uh uh until that happens and they absolutely insist on it, I think we just gotta move forward without the parking enhancements that they're asking for.
And and what about the half mile to public transit clause is?
Well, let's get this one done, Craig, because there's another one that goes along with it. Uh, we have consensus on that?
Yeah.
Do we?
Yeah.
Okay, uh. The other thing I wanted to mention is uh, I I believe we should adopt the language on in the, in the uh County North Plan. It's already been approved by the Coastal Commission. The uh um state had no problems. This thing about acts a- access ingress and egress, the two, the two, the language for the two exits to a highway. Um. Just because of the problems we've had in the past with fires where we could not evacuate because of that. And these fires are fast moving. The last one was very fast moving. Whereas the one at Trancas was kind of slow, but we had about two miles going up Trancas Road of cars dead stop. Um, so I think we need to adopt that language. I don't think we have any problem with it with coastal or this or the state because they've already accepted. Um, and that. The whole section um moved on nonquestion by, we can always say to coastal, hey, you approved it ten feet away.
But but
So.
The the North County Plan is not coastal, right?
Thank you.
Well, the other plan has it also, the uh.
Now, so as 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 I mentioned in my presentation and Commissioner Jennings has uh referenced the North Area Plan, which is where that language is, um, is outside of the coastal zone. So it has not never uh been reviewed by the Coastal Commission uh because it was not required to be reviewed by the Coastal Commission. In the Santa Monica Mountains, LCP and LIP, that language does not exist. It has other parking requirements, um, but not the uh language that prohibits ADUs. So it's, it was, it's not something that the coastal has signed off on.
Well, uh we have to realize, I, at least for the state law, I know it exempt, it it banned them totally in Topanga, totally. Okay, now we have to look at public health and safety and we will literally kill people if we don't have some, some way to evacuate. We will literally kill people.
But you're acting, Vice Chair, like we're we're or you're stating like we're gonna have five thousand units built. We're not. And I don't think we're gonna clog it up. And the reason we're clogged up out here at the west side, I wasn't here then, is because the CHB was only sending us to the east side and nobody could get out of here. So.
That wasn't the train that fired. But I I wanna point out to you that that we have Big Rock.
Yeah, well, hey, why, why, why wouldn't we put in a requirement of two egresses? Why wouldn't we do that?
One reason is I find it hard to draw the line between what's a long road that requires an egress? Is an extended flag lot requiring two egresses? Uh, where where do you draw the line in terms of of uh where the two egresses have to have to approach? And I, when we did this, huh, I can't remember whether this is the second time or the third time before that we that we discussed this. I I remember having a lot of trouble with figuring out where the lines were going to be drawn. And I thought when I read this staff report that the whole that the reason that the language was not included was because we had abandoned all of the uh states parking, additional parking requirements that have been put in place, the things that we're going to have people parking on the, on the street. We've abandoned all those requirements. Everybody's gonna have to park on site. And so the uh the trade off then was to to not have the 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 prohibition on building ADUs. Um, that's, that's the way I would think about it. And and again, John, uh, you know, what's been going on? How long has it been since the LIP was adopted? Um. It's it, we're not doing anything different than what we've done over the last twenty-five years.
Well, that's, that's, uh, the way I look at that is that's like when our our staff came up with the this statement through the traffic engineer, the traffic hadn't in- increased on PCH in twenty-five years. Okay?
Don't get me started on that one.
Okay, but we had the Coastal Commission come in before we got the LIP and said, you are limited to two thousand houses forever. Okay? They never followed through on it, but they voted on it. Okay? And uh the second part of what I'm gonna say here is we have to have like a road standards. Okay? The county did. The fire department did. And and that's why this north plan, they looked at safety. And I don't wanna, I I'm not gonna, you know, I may lose on this, but I'm not gonna vote when I have a chance of killing people. Okay? And and if you get I'd say what? I don't know, a thousand people live in Big Rock and you got one lane out? Okay? And you add maybe four hundred more? And the fire's coming at you from Topanga?
There's never gonna be four hundred more AD.
Why not? I just wanna.
John, 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 what's, what is your solution? Or what are you offering here as a proposal to deal with this? Are you saying?
Offering what the County North Plan says. You need two ways out. Okay? Through a highway, two ways.
So so essentially on Zumaress, you would not be allowed to build an ADU. You don't have two ways out to a highway.
Sure I do. I hang a left on Wildlife or I go straight on Zumaress.
Oh, you don't. Not from your house. You can go only one direction. You can't make a right.
I can, I can go up to the corner, hang a left and go over to Porthead. Or I can go right and go to the highway. Both gonna go, both go to, both go to the highway.
You guys are illustrating my point.
It's not, that's, you're, you're talking about going onto other streets. Your street doesn't connect to the highway. You'd have to go.
Does, you have two ways.
So you wouldn't, so you wouldn't be allowed one to bit to build one anywhere at Big Rock? That would be out. You wouldn't be allowed to build one up Winding Way East. You wouldn't be allowed to build one up Winding Way West. You wouldn't be allowed to build one up Trankas Canyon.
Question is. You wouldn't be able.
You'd be allowed to build them on Point Doom?
Yes, every single street on Point Doom.
You're allowed to build them in Malibu Park.
Every single, every single street on Point Doom that's two ways to a highway.
John, John.
The reason I'm saying this is there's a difference we're saying between saying, gee, it's not fair. You can't do this. And gee, it's not fair. You killed somebody. Okay? And there are, for example, Trankas Canyon. There's three miles up there that has no water. Okay?
At their decision, they voted to do that, by the way.
We what we, they, there's an example of where they couldn't get out. We specifically gave them another way out. Okay? That's you can't just say all these mountains, everybody can get out uh in a fire. If if you're, if you're in an area like Big Rock and Topanga's on fire, you don't have hours. You have a half an hour to get out of there. Okay? If you increase the population there, you have less of a chance because the highway's full. Every time you hang a left, you get a couple cars. Now, that's important because we killed two firemen on on Crow Canyon, same reason. We killed them. We didn't kill them, but the access did.
Can we hear from, can we hear from Mr. Leishman? He's got.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Chair and Commission. Uh, to clarify, and Tyler or Richard, maybe you or or Joyce, you can confirm. My understanding is that the current LCP does not include a two access requirement. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's the reason why what you have in front of you does not include that. It's because of the council direction to stick closely with what we have. Of course, as I mentioned earlier, it does lie within your discretion tonight to add a change to that as a recommendation to the council. If there are three in favor on in this body, uh, to make that recommendation, of course. And um just a reminder for this commission that it's relatively important that you reach uh a decision tonight that you come up with a recommendation. Um, if it's to approve or to approve with amendments, and you've outlined some already. Um, or to, I'm sorry, if it's a recommendation to approve, a recommendation to approve with amendments, or if it's a recommendation to um disapprove or or decline to approve. But uh, so just as you watch the clock, just keep that in mind.
Okay, now can you tell me why it's relatively important?
Yeah, this has been going on for five years.
Well, okay, so another week is is no big deal in five years.
We'll, we'll, we'll get to something tonight. I don't think that's an issue.
No, but I I just wanna, there's two sections to what the county did.
Hang on.
Fire Department, by the way.
Vice Chair Mazza, you've, you've made your point about.
Oh, I haven't finished.
Yeah, you have for a minute.
Oh, I have not because there's another factor to this.
There, there isn't.
There isn't? You don't think an eleven foot wide street has any kind of factor here?
I'm, I'm, I'm not going there right now. I'm just like, let somebody else talk.
No, no, no. I met with the fire, the chief of of LA County's Fire Department and his assistant from Malibu. Okay? On this, we never asked him. Okay, this is the fire department. This is where where two thousand and eighteen screwed our town. Okay? And we can't just say, oh gee, we got a half an hour. Let's just ignore fire. Now, part of their other language was, you gotta have X size of street. Okay? Do you want Craig to try to get out on an eleven foot street when a fire truck's coming the other way? No. So we have to address these things.
We're, we're not, okay, Commissioner Jennings.
Is this the same fire department that watched my house burn? Um, anyway, they, uh.
I agree with you on that.
Okay, on January sixth, nineteen twenty-two, the staff report uh on one iteration of this, you guys drafted all of that and you put little diagrams in there. We don't have to go to the North County Plan or anybody else's plan. You already put it together. And if we wanted to, if we wanted to adopt that, if it was, if there's a three votes to adopt that, then you can just pull it right out of of what you did in Ja- in nineteen twenty-two, right? Joyce?
Well, that's what, that's where it came from. They, it was the exact same language with the exact same, same uh uh diagrams drawn by them.
Yes, uh, yes, the the difference um is that Vice Chair Mazza is um wants the code to prohibit an ADU in those situations. And uh, staff's recommendation has always been just to increase the development standards as opposed to prohibit them uh prohibit them if they have only one means of access.
But the development standard loophole that we're putting in here is put sprinklers inside of your house. Okay, not a single sane person would think that would stop a wildfire. Not one. You can have a shower while you're getting.
Air sprinklers have no impact on a wildfire. The only thing that they do is allow more time for somebody that's in the house to get out of the house. So that is a little bit more time for the fire department to get there if they're coming and protect property.
If they're gonna do a structure fire, it helps. But that's our loophole. Our loophole, as it's written now, says you gotta do this, but if you don't, if you don't have it, put sprinklers in your ADU only, not your house.
I think John, I think John and Jeff are both right. John, John is right about the egress that that having two egresses really is significant. I think the road width requirement, the twenty-four foot wide is not significant now that we've taken parking off the streets and so forth. That I'm, I'd, if I had two egresses even on my narrow road, I'd feel comfortable saying, sure, let there be some ADUs up here. But and and never mind the width of the road, we can work that out. But if it's, if without the two egresses, anywhere up here feels uncomfortable that way.
Well, and I hope you know that the fire department is a well-served. Well, and I hope you know that the Fire Department gives a will serve letter on everything we do. And then in the trucks, they have don't go maps.
Yeah.
And the don't go covers your street, I'm sure.
Yeah.
So why don't we, uh, since we don't know how many other issues are going to be, why don't we put a pin on this for the time being? Try to explore what the, the rest of the universe is that we're gonna have to go over. And then we could circle back to this as a final decision.
In that case, can we take five?
Yeah, I was gonna explore the universe in my restroom for a short moment.
I gotta feed the dog.
Five minutes.
Okay, uh.
Dennis, you're muted.
Okay, five minutes. Thank you.
Dennis, I'm back in and available when everybody is able to rejoin. Tyler is back in his office. He just doesn't have his video live yet.
I'm sure that saved the lives of many people watching us. Including our own.
What? I didn't get that.
Means we took a break and we needed.
Oh, okay.
Guess Tyler's still exploring the universe.
Said he had to go.
Well, the short breaks have definitely made me glad for the location of my desk relative to the restrooms.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
I think Tyler had a little bit more of a sprint tonight.
Or he had more beers than we did.
We ought to impose a rule that after ten o'clock, everybody has to start drinking.
You should have had a special meeting on St. Patrick's Day.
Well, I'm happy to live vicariously through all of you if that's something you wanna do.
He didn't specify beverage. I'm hitting the Diet Coke. I'm actually Diet Root Beer tonight.
Yeah, Rebecca and I will be into the hard stuff. There he is, Miss, Mr. Peak. Okay.
I believe I wanna be sure that we have our assistant city attorneys present.
Yes, we need, uh there she is. There she is.
And Mr. Leishman?
Leishman, I guess. I think as long as Ms. Castillo's here.
Yeah, I think that you, you could move forward.
Okay. And we are now back in session. And uh, we're looking for new things to discuss. Is anybody, I, I know, I know.
I have one that's probably not controversial, but maybe it is. It's language.
Uh, Commissioner Jennings, I'm looking at you.
No, I just if we could get, we could just touch on all of them briefly and then come back and focus because I know that, you know, you guys had eleven pages or John had eleven pages of comments last night. So just to get an idea.
Mr. Chair, I, I was gonna suggest something similar, um, if we can get an, an idea of all the topics we might need to cover this evening. Um, and then a, a portion time according to what we have left.
I, I disagree with that. I think let's just go ahead. We don't have probably that much left and, and if we don't give everything the time it deserves, we'll continue the meeting if it's too late for you.
I don't think we can do that.
Sure we can. Okay, I, here's an issue. Here's an issue. I've started to bring it up. Parking. Uh, do we still have that, uh, no parking required within a half mile of public transit? Is that now still in the draft?
No, it is not.
Okay, great.
In, in the LCP, yes, it has been removed.
Okay, and then what about, um, there's a mention of parking lifts? Um, I forget if that's MMC or LCP, but I don't think we should be putting that in there because we've had enough debate about those that I don't think we should be arbitrarily uh, institutionalizing them.
And all of a sudden getting hotels suing us.
Is that?
Yes.
I'm waiting for Joyce.
Oh, I was, I was uh, trying to remember whether that was in the um, MMC or I believe it was. Tyler, I don't believe it's in the LCP. Is that correct?
I just looked it up. Only comes up in the MMC.
But we've never allowed parking lifts in Malibu, so I don't think there's a reason to.
What's next?
What's next? And so, and if, I'm sorry, and if, if the uh, commission wanted to take it out of the LCP, I don't think there's anything in state law that says we have to allow lifts, but.
It's not there now.
It's not in the LCP.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, the MMC.
Yeah.
So, so no parking licenses, that's consensus?
Yeah.
Okay, I just got a real quick one and that is one of the main reasons statewide, not necessarily us, but really in fact us is that um we have the um regional housing requirements. And every, correct me if I'm wrong, every five years, we have to turn a big report and they tell us how many houses we gotta do for nothing, low income, which means you rent them out for fifty bucks a month or something. And uh and it's a state law and we're gonna require to do it. And one time we forgot to file it and the cost, we had to deal with five hundred and two houses. And one of the things we can get out of this, and, and that's on page fifteen of the LCP amendments is requiring people to tell us whether they're not, they're low income or not. And the way it's now, we say ask. Well, you ask anybody for their financial information. If it has to do with their tax return, you're not gonna get it. So I think I think we should say maybe required and then it'd be a penalty if you don't do it or something, but if we built two hundred of these over five years, that's taking, to take care of our requirements for decades. But if we say don't tell us, it's gonna take a, care of our requirements for zero. And uh the big advantages for doing this. The word asked to require and then, and then of course, we're gonna have people that aren't gonna tell us and then have you know, let the compliance officer or whatever the city, the city council figure out a fine or something. But every one of these we gets, we get saves us a lot of grief.
You're talking about the rental rate reporting, right?
I'm, yeah, I'm talking about whether it's low income. Yeah, that qualifies the house for low income. So you don't, it doesn't say you have to rent it cheap. It just says you have to tell us. And if it is cheap, we get to count it.
And Vice Chair Maza, um that uh, was changed to ask at the direction of the majority of the planning commission at the last hearing.
Right.
To require it.
And I'm saying that it's a major, major mistake because
And I think it was four to one.
A lot of time. Many hundreds of staff hours do all this stuff. And one time we got four houses, one time we got five hundred and two. You know, it's, it's something that we can't require them. We're not putting in, I'm not saying put in rent control or anything else. But we need to know that. And if we say ask, forget it.
I thought what we said before was to put in ask, but tell them the reason why so that they understand and they're, they're likely to say, oh, right, okay, I'll report that.
How much did you make, uh, you know, renting out your SDR? How many people told us that? Zero, okay?
If, if we say.
The, the regional housing plan, which is what Huntington Beach is suing about now, and it's a big deal. And it changes our zoning and we have no choice but to change our zoning. It's a law. And so if we could pick up five, ten houses a year by just saying you're required to do it and obviously in Malibu, we don't go out and lock them up, but maybe they pay a couple hundred dollar fine or something, but at least we have a chance. With, with the word asked, that letter goes right in the trash. Uh, I mean, this is human nature. You don't report your income to anybody. Unless you have to. And, and this is a, this is every, I don't know, Richard could tell me, every five years, it's probably two hundred man-hours, three hundred man-hours to do all this stuff. And then we lose. We gotta go to a hearing and it's a big deal.
Vice Chair, let me go to Commissioner Jennings real quick and then Commissioner Peak.
Yeah, well, I've just gotta emphasize that it was, it was thrown out because of a strong majority of, I, I don't, it wasn't the last hearing. It was the, the original hearing, I believe. And um yeah, it, it's, it's, we get credit for the number of units that get built anyway. It's gonna help us with our arena requirements. And I'm not sure that actually if you, if you went to them and said, okay, look how many of these we did, uh, it, it would help us with the numbers that much. Secondly, uh, what evidence is it gonna be? Do you, you're gonna require people to provide this information under oath? You gotta demand their tax returns? I mean it, it, first of all, you gotta see if there's a problem. And I don't think there's a problem that requires this drastic an intrusion into people's lives. I, I absolutely.
Well yeah, and you're libertarian and, and I understand that, so am I. It's just, if you don't ask, you never know. And we get zero credit, zero. If we don't.
It's not true. That's not.
It is.
It's not. Now, hang on, uh, Commissioner Peak, and then I wanna ask Director Malik or something. Go ahead, Todd or Scott.
Uh, I don't know if this is a question for Todd or for Joyce or Richard, but what is the threshold that uh, can, that makes one of those units eligible to be counted?
Good question.
Our magic number now is right, is seventy-nine, I believe.
I would need to look up um, what the um county standard is now to be classified as, as low and moderate income. I haven't looked at that for a while, so I don't know what it is. Todd, do you know what the standard is?
No.
It's something like fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred bucks a month rent. I vaguely recall it's in that zone.
Now, do, do we get credit for something like that, Joyce? If somebody is letting somebody live in their second unit and not paying rent?
So, um, and I apologize for not having this information. It was, it was in the uh, previous uh, staff report. So, um, when the state, in in our case SCAG, determines um, whether an ADU can be counted toward our arena, our regional housing, they have an established formula. Because this is all over Los Angeles County. And so there was a question is how do you determine whether uh, we could count one of those units as either a low or, or uh, modern income unit under arena and get, and get a credit for it? So because there was uh, such a difference, you know, across the SCAG reason, region, they have actually created a formula. And that formula, I can't remember now, but uh, in, in the housing element that was approved by the city council, that formula was used and I, and I believe that um the city was able to count uh, second units at that time.
But were they able to count second units at that time, just whether they were being rented out for five thousand dollars a month or whether they were being rented out for fifteen dollars a month?
They did not take that into, uh, the formula does not take that into the cost that's being rented into. They did not take that into, uh, the formula does not take that into the cost that's being rented into account, is my recollection. Pull up that.
Just the mere fact that it's built doesn't matter to the, for their calculating purposes, they will count it whether they know the amount of rent that's being paid or not? That doesn't sound, it doesn't sound right to me.
It's a certain, there's a certain formula that they use, and if, if you want, um, I could look that up in a, a previous staff report and, and get back to you on that.
Well, look, I, I, I think it's important, I think that, that you know, John makes a good point, that if, if we can use this and the information's valid and helpful for the city in return, in regards to that, then we, we should require something that we get from them, because there's, there's a, a great benefit uh to the city as a whole. Um, considering that I believe most people here do not want a lot more of um, large-scale affordable housing projects built. But I, I, I don't say that in the wings that they don't want them built. I just think that, that um we don't have a lot of uh the city's not encouraging large-scale development, period. Right? And I don't, that's what the residents want, but.
So what I'm seeing, or what I, this is how I'm looking at this, it is it Director Malik, is this almost like a one-to-one type of thing? We build, we take, we get one ADU, uh, we get a permit, you tell coastal, you tell the state, we've got a, we've got a permit, we're doing, we're, we're doing, we're processing a permit. She comes off the seventy-nine total, now you're down to seventy-eight. Is that, is that how it will work? Well, is we don't have to have anybody tell how much they're renting for. The states, everybody's giving us a little bit of leeway here for this. Am I not correct? We just have to build them and then, okay, we got another, we got another, we got another one. And then they start checking that big number off, and it call it, because I asked the guy that, when we met with, I think it was the BBNK that was giving the presentation, I said, do the ADUs get us out of trouble with the housing element? As we keep checking them off, and he said, yes. Am I, am I under this correctly, or am I way wet on?
I, I think the question is, is whether they would count uh as low income. They would count, so the, the city has a range of housing units they need to build um as part of Rena. Some of them are um very low and low income, and those are usually the ones that, that most cities, not just Malibu, most cities have the most difficult um time um meeting that requirement. But a regular ADU, yes, it could count, it would count, help us count toward our arena.
They don't care.
They do care, they will not count anything other than a low-income unit. That is why the ADU was written. They wrote it for low-income units. That's different than Rena. They did not re, we are not putting in rent control, so we cannot count all of them. And I've been through this on foresight. They don't say, build a guest house and we'll count it as low income. They don't say that.
I, I think that we understand that, John. I think that, I, I just wanna be clear, I'm not advocating for us to put rent control in for these. But what I'm saying is if there's a way for us to capture it, that doesn't seem so evasive, to get that information and it benefits the city, then we ought to figure out a way to do that.
And, and all I'm saying is you can require it, but we can't enforce it. But you'll get a certain percentage of the people who are renting to their grandma or whatever, they're gonna turn it in. If you go in there and say, oh, would you please? That letter's going in the round file. It's just one word, and if that word can get us ten of these, if there's a hundred of them built, we have ten low-income units we don't have to zone for. And what the real requirement is not that you build them, you have to prove you provided them, or you have to zone for new ones. For example, and, and so you have to take existing, like right across from Paradise Cove, there's a big lot. That's zone for Rena, okay? And because we had to zone X number of houses. And those were the shortfall we had in the prior five years. And that had to do with income.
What's the best way to capture that information and/or is it relevant? And I see that our attorney has his hand raised.
Chair and Commission, this is very common. Uh, and a rent reporting requirement is implemented in most cities ADU ordinances. It's not controversial in most every case. The reason why we suggest doing it is so that you can gather enough information to justify and better support your claim for your claim of ADUs for lower income. Um, yes, HCD has in the past sometimes accepted a, a formula-driven set of assumptions, but it's not a foregone conclusion, and they have expressly said that cities may require income reporting. And most cities do, because the way things are going. HCD, cities want as much support as possible if they're going to claim an ADU for a lower income unit. And as to the person who might rent it out to a family member or just let a family member use it, well, then they can tell us that they're renting it out for zero, or they can tell us they're renting it out for forty dollars a month, or they can tell us that they you know, if, if they, they're not renting it out at the moment, but if they did, it would be at two hundred dollars a month. We just try to gather the information that we can without making it a big deal. Most cities now are moving away from annual reporting based on the date of issuance of the permit, and instead ask for the reporting to come in in the first ninety days of the year. And that seems to be a little easier for staff. It's just, it can be an email, it can be an online form, the numbers get populated in a spreadsheet, and then they know. So that's the, that's the reason behind it. It's both practical and somewhat legal.
What do you mean somewhat legal?
Exactly what I said.
Well, what happens if somebody doesn't report?
And that would be a violation of the code, and it would be handled accordingly.
You'd have a code violation?
Yes.
With a ten thousand dollar a day fine, uh, that sort of.
Well, they'd probably start with a notice of violation, and then a hundred dollar fine, and then a two hundred dollar fine, and however, code enforcement happens with general code provisions. That's how most cities handle it.
Our fine for a TUP violation is five hundred dollars. We, we don't take people to, like the IRS.
I think in, in this context, I think it might be enough just to decide as a group whether you want to recommend keeping that or or ditching it. And if you want to ditch it, then you can um recommend that to the council, and if they agree with you, they can strip it out. If they choose to keep it, then code enforcement will handle it appropriately.
I agree with John and Skylar that it's important, but I don't understand, John, how, how you can compel enforcement and what, I mean, it, can we not just change the language to say require instead of ask?
That's all I'm asking for. I'm saying that in Malibu, we basically have almost no code enforcement on anything. Okay, to, for us to send a code enforcement officer out to every house and knock on their door and say, how much did you pay? We're not gonna do that. But right now, this, the way the language reads, we might send them a postcard saying, hey, uh, please send us the information.
Well, so we're still gonna send them a postcard saying you're required to send this.
Well, being in the code, all I'm saying is get rid of the word asked and say require. It's up to the city council when they do their fines, if they wanna make it a low fine or a big fine. We don't do the fines.
What?
What's that?
Why don't we make the recommendation to council that they require the reporting within the first ninety days of the calendar year?
That's all I'm saying.
Is there any? Are we in agreement on that or no?
I think we have, I think we have three votes in a straw poll here.
That's true.
Poll and move on.
Yeah.
Yeah, the problem has, comes in, in, if you wire reporting. And then, uh, gee, how does that interreact with the IRS and state uh income tax? People who aren't gonna wanna do it.
Do you think there's a single number, one number that our city reports to the IRS, other than their ten ninety-nine for their employees? No, they're not gonna write a letter to the IRS saying this guy reported this. That's, that's
They're gonna tell the state that, and the state's gonna keep track of it, and then the state's gonna come back.
We don't tell the state, we say these particular houses.
All right.
What I'm saying, I'm looking for maybe a ten or twenty percent compliance.
Couldn't, couldn't you also require? Couldn't you also require a reporting that lists the threshold that would make it calculatedable for us for that lower threshold and say did you rent it out? Yes or no? Did you do it below this amount? Yes or no? Then you're not getting the exact amount, you're just getting a simple answer.
Skylar, it gets a little complicated because they have these formulas and, and lower and middle and upper, and you ten percent of this and ten percent of that, and yeah, so they rent it out for fifteen, uh, nine hundred dollars a month, and they report seven. Big deal, okay? They're either gonna tell you, we're renting it out cheap, or we're renting it out for what, what it costs in Malibu.
Okay, so right now, right now, it looks like it's a three to two vote. What's the next, what's the next thing you, you guys are wanting to talk, talk about?
Is that a consensus? We're gonna change?
Well, it is for you.
You know what consensus means? It's three to two.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just saying some of that, okay?
Can I, I mentioned something earlier that I like to flesh out briefly, uh, that um we have this requirement that OWTS percolate, that, 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 the percolation test, et cetera. But there are situations where that's not relevant, it should be required, but the, the real issue is the groundwater input in places like Big Rock, Malibu Road, or of, along Birdview, or you know, erosive places. So I'm wondering if there's, what we could, what if anything we could do to address those situations in terms of requiring, for example, I don't know, a slope stability report, or um, you know, some, some further indices of geological uh stability.
I don't think any of that is necessary, and that'll all be handled by the building and safety and geology at the time when you apply for your permit, if you're gonna build one of these, along with your septic.
Yeah, you, you're gonna have this, you're gonna have the fixture count of the ADU that's gonna be added to whatever you had when you built the original house. That's all gonna be compared to the capacity of the on-sidewash gutter treatment system. I don't I don't see adding anything else that's gonna be helpful.
Well, it's not about the functionality of the OWTS so much as it is about the, just the added marginal input to the groundwater.
That's gonna all be calculated when you go to apply for your permit?
Not necessarily. Especially under the ADU con, context where it's, you know, sort of streamlined, they might just say, well, great, your house passed GO, so you know, we're just gonna like reflexively pass this other bit, because it's the same geology, without looking at any potential cumulative impacts.
But it's, it's, it's a toilet and it's a sink, and they're, they're not gonna be on all the time. It's if the tank can handle it. We, we're supposed to be making this easier.
Yeah, or, or it's fifty of them in a neighborhood that each have a new toilet.
It's not gonna happen that way. You know that, and I know that.
I don't know that.
But we're not doing anything different than we haven't done for the last twenty years.
Well, sorta, and we had those houses on, on Big Rock that we went through the big drill on, but I
Staff, is the, staff, is, is this, is this concern at all? Or, or am I barking up the wrong tree, or do we wanna care about marginal input to groundwater? In sensitive areas?
Yeah, all, all the same standards would apply, uh, you know, if a geo report was required for the development, it would be required, percolation, OWTS requirements, all of that.
Okay.
Let me, uh, let me do something that's sort of similar to that, and that is one of the things in the LCP requirements here, and I can't find it right now, is that you, you it says you turn in your application for uh ADU, and the city's got, correct me if I'm wrong, Joyce, ninety days, it might be sixty, to send you an approval or a detailed reason for rejection. If you don't do that, it's automatically approved. Now, that's a state thing. I understand that.
That's MMC.
What?
MMC.
Yeah, but I mean, state, state is the one that's saying you got ninety days and you're, you're done. And what I'm worried about is, I think we should put in that language that before you can apply and this ninety day starts, you need to get the LCP review done. And that doesn't count during the ninety days, because what can happen here is when we first start out, we, we're short-staffed. And somebody walks in and, and plucks something down, and the ninety-day clock gets going. And theoretically, you're supposed to check their se, you know, their septic, uh, where they live, uh, you know, how far from the road, and all this kind of stuff you're supposed to do. And that's going along in the ninety days in what, six different departments? And if they don't get it done in time, it's proof. Uh, so I, all I'm asking is, we add a sentence in there saying the application is deemed complete upon the clearance by the planning department, that it's eligible for a uh, automatic, whatever it is, not, not under the LCP, but under the municipal code. Because when we first start this out, Richard might get a hundred of them in the first sixty days. And the way I look at the planning department right now, and you correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think you could process a hundred where you check all, all these different boxes in ninety days. So anybody who's got some smarts will get together all their buddies and apply at the same time. And all, and all this is saying is yeah, we'll take ninety days and we'll tell you, but you gotta, we gotta make sure you're what you call it, instead of a, a LCP.
Mr. Leishman?
Chair and Commission, if the state ADU law says that the city has to take action on an ADU application within sixty days of receipt.
Right.
If they come in for an L, th, that won't be reduced at all by the time that it takes to figure out if it's gonna be subject to an LCP or an AD, CDP.
So the city could not say we, we have certain requirements for every application to be deemed complete. Every single one we do, okay? And we can't do that on ADUs.
I think you're a little in the weeds, staff. Staff knows how this works. They're used to doing it. It's part of their job. They know when to deem an application complete. The clock starts from when the application is complete. They have sixty days to take action on it, whether it's through the LCP or the, the MMC.
All I'm saying is our language in this amendment does not say when it's deemed complete. It says when you apply. And all I wanna say is it's deemed complete. And then the clock runs. Is deemed complete.
John, I don't think that there's a problem with that language. I, I mean, I, I think that's kind of the intention of the language, to say that the clock starts when the application is complete. Or are you gonna get an application and it's not complete, you just send them a letter, sorry, your application's not complete. Clock's ended, you've made your decision.
No, you, you have to turn it down, not saying it's not complete. You have to turn it down. That's a lot different than saying your application isn't complete.
Yeah, aren't, aren't, aren't you talking, John, about something which applies only to those ADU applications that would be processed under the Malibu Municipal Code?
Right, but you have to determine which ones they are.
But they're all, if that's not a tough job, because anything is gonna have, that, that's not an interior or JADU or whatever, is gonna have to be processed under the, under the LIP, right? And there, and you aren't putting these requirements into the LIP, if I assume you're being consistent with what we're doing now, Cal, uh, Malibu is one of the only cities in the state of California for, to which the Permit Streamlining Act does not apply. And uh, so it, it doesn't seem to me that this is an issue.
Well, in this case, it applies.
But Joyce, help me out here. Are you saying that there's a time limit on the application for ADUs that are processed under the LIP?
I, and, and no, I think what Commissioner
I and and no, I think what Commissioner or Vice Chair Maza is concerned about. Is if somebody submits an application for an ADU. That the city, because staff are so busy, would not. Have, would not be able within that sixty days to determine whether. It would be processed under the LCP. And so. We talked about that and I said, well, it'll be obvious if it's in attached or detached or converted. You don't have to study it further than that. It goes to the LCP. Um and so I think, right, uh Vice Chair Maza, you're concerned about. Whether staff within sixty days can make the determination whether. It needs to be processed under the LCP. I believe that's what we spoke about.
You know, that's what we spoke about, and I'm mainly concerned about the fact that we're way understaffed.
All you gotta do is look.
You don't have people trained to do this. And the the ones that are trained to know what the LCP requirements are are busy.
Could we just could we just bump it to ninety days and give a little?
Oh, it's required by the law. That's that's all I'm saying is.
Well, if it's required, then we we can argue about it.
All I'm saying is take the determination on which way the application goes before you start counting the days. That's all.
I don't. We can't, we can't change the rules, John, for. The MMC. We have to follow the state statute. And if the statute says. Delivered, if it says completed, if it says dropped off, if it says mailed in, we use whatever the state statute says, right?
It says when you apply.
See, your planner eaten, go ahead.
Uh yes, thank you, uh Chair. So just wanted to add that we have ways, I know we're understaffed for sure, leave us. Uh but we have ways uh to flag these type of applications. We do so for wireless. Uh um you know, sometimes with those ones, we have to uh issue incomplete letters within ten days. And believe me, we get a lot of those applications and we stay on top of it. So uh there are ways to flag, you know, at least getting an incomplete letter out. By a certain uh date.
Yeah, my only worry is it doesn't say the application has to be completed. It says nothing, just apply. And that's why I wanted to put a filter in between where we can send an incomplete letter, or we can do this and that, and we're not. We're not going through this big long process.
I don't think they're giving enough credit to staff, their vice chair. I think staff is a lot lot better than than we think. I I think we just heard that from. From one of our senior planners.
Well, that may be true. I get. I get. I watch city council meetings and I listen to them saying, oh my God, we're so far behind. We have X number of. Uh uh things that haven't come before the planning commission, blah, 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 blah. So the city council is telling me through the staff that we are behind. All I'm trying to do is put in one little. Thing that's gets that clock. To where they have a chance to make sure that they don't miss it, because if they miss it, it's done.
So, John, what you're really saying is that whatever the state statute says, what it really means is a completed application.
But what if you just say that? I don't know. It doesn't say it when you read it.
What if you just clarified it by saying, when you apply and your application is complete?
Because you gotta determine it's complete. This is, I'm talking language. This is not brain surgery. I'm talking language. There's nothing in that language that says what complete is.
Chair?
Go ahead.
Thank you. The statute that governs the MMC. Says that the permitting agency shall either approve or deny the application to create. An ADU within sixty days from the date the permitting agency receives a completed application. This, it is not necessary for this body to wade into what does and does not constitute a completed application. That's already well established. Staff is used to doing that. They know the rules that govern that. It is not really.
Drop it. When I read it, I have completed.
Okay, so just to make sure that language is clear in the draft, that that's the distinction that needs to be made here.
That's fine. If if that language is not in the draft, it needs to be in the draft. Statutory language for the MMC. If you want the same rule to apply to the uh ones that are processed under the LCP, staff can include that as one of your recommendations.
What's next, guys?
Thank you.
Um I'm I'm wondering about, can we require any any sort of notice to neighbors uh of of these things? Seems like there's little or none, and maybe that's by design in this whole thing, but. And likewise, I'm a little fuzzy about public hearings. There's some staff comment somewhere I noted, and now I forget where, but it said public hearings should be allowed to the extent possible. That's sort of vague. Um. I I'd just like to be able to make sure that neighbors get some kind of notice on this, and as it is stands right now, it seems pretty dark.
Aren't they gonna get? Sorry, aren't they gonna get the same notice that they get for any other administrative CDP?
Maybe not, maybe not for a JADU. I don't know.
Well, for the JADUs, that's all done under the MMC and those things are ministerial.
Yeah, that's kind of my point is if there's suddenly another family moving in next door, it would be nice to know about that.
You don't get to do that under the state law.
No, you don't get to provide notice?
No, you can't make that a new requirement.
I thought you could you could be more restrictive. You just have to abide by the state law, but you could be more restrictive if you want, in which case.
No, it's the opposite. You can be less restrictive if you want.
Hey, that's handled. Next.
Well, let me ask a question on that. I don't know if it's MMC or the LIP says any decision by the planning director is appealable. Now.
Yeah.
And this says it's not even reportable. So how would anybody even know, uh uh even if it got approved, that it was gonna be built next to their house? There must be some way to find out.
You're talking about the MMC projects, right?
Well, yeah, whatever.
Well, whatever, there's a difference, because if you're talking about projects under the LIP, they go through the normal noticing procedures. That every other administrative coastal development goes through.
Okay, the ones that aren't, I guess the ones that aren't approved, uh. Or the through the MMC. If you, if you're a neighbor. And all of a sudden they truck in one of Airbnb's. Mobile units and pluck it in front of your view. You're done, right? That's the way it's written? You're done?
Uh so, no, yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Richard.
Oh, I just wanted to clarify the first point, which is the language that Commissioner Maza mentioned is the LCP, not the MMC. On the MMC, there are certain decisions that begin and end with the director. They're not appealable. And. The. The way this would work, and I think Joyce, this is where you might be going, is that if. Somebody comes in to build a new structure, so if you're talking something new mass, that's gonna get reported to the planning commission. And that would be done through the coastal development permit processes and and administrative CDP. The only decisions here that would be non-appealable decisions. Are decisions that relate to conversions of space. So essentially, it's just interior work. Uh that and and Todd, I believe we cannot make those appeal by, uh Todd, there you are, black screen, but he's still around. Um and those I don't believe we can make appealable.
Under the MMC?
Correct.
Correct, they're ministerial decisions.
But can you make them noticeable? Can you tell neighbors you're doing it? You can't.
No, why would you?
Because they're gonna have something built right next to them.
Doesn't matter. There can be a posted notice along with uh. If if that's a requirement of a building permit that they post notice, so the passersby can see what's happening behind the fence.
Do we have posted notice requirement?
When you get a building permit, you have to post on the property. It's a good-sized sign. That goes on the property that there's a building permit. But once again. If they're building a new structure, uh Joyce, correct me if I'm speaking here, but if they're building a new structure. That would be the route of a administrative coastal development permit.
That's correct. And that includes hauling one on and and placing it on the property. That would be a new structure.
You don't get to build the structure under the ministerial process.
You can fill in your garage though, right?
No, you it would not. And so coastal's direction was that. Um if you were converting habitable space, um it was not development. If you are converting. Non-habitable space such as your garage, then you are in the LCP. Because it is, would be new development, because you're converting something to habitable space.
What's next?
Okay, I think we should go to Moby Family, uh.
I've I've got, before we're there, I've got a couple on setbacks. Um. I think the the normal minor modification on setbacks is is up to fifty percent. If we're talking about dense neighborhoods, maybe we should be reducing that and saying that minor mods. Might be allowed up to twenty percent or some some number like that.
Sue. Sorry, Chair.
Go.
No, thank you. Didn't mean to jump in. So just real quick for the benefit of the commission, uh minor mods are fifty percent for the front yard. And then it is a twenty percent reduction, uh right, Tyler, I'm not speaking here, uh for side and rear.
So maybe we we wanna tighten that up a little bit, just to say. Fifty percent is a lot for the front front yard.
Greg, there's a provision in there that a minor modification, one of the findings you have to make is it doesn't have a deleterious effect on neighborhood. Character, and so you can always, uh that's the out that is always available on a minor modification.
The neighborhood character component comes in on the minor, it's not just a site plan review?
It's is it? Yeah.
Well, let me ask you this. I think there's something in the code that says you can't build the guest house in your front yard, right?
Uh that is correct. The um. The only uh exception to that is you have an existing. Uh building already in the front yard and you wanna convert that to an ADU.
Okay.
Okay, and now even Cynthia Martin at Don Schmitz's company uh said that an alternative, I'll turn. An alternative to the four-foot side and rear setback. Would be to implement no more than a five-foot side and rear setback, which is something I had suggested since that's the fire department walk around. It seems weird to have a five and a four. Uh why don't we just call that five?
So again, uh I'm sorry, Commissioner Hill, are you, uh when you were making these suggestions? Uh are you referring to the municipal code? Because the LCP requires full setbacks. Those four four-foot setbacks are only allowed if it's if the ADU is processed under the municipal code.
Yeah.
I think his point is the fire department requires five. Why would we change it to four?
Yeah.
We didn't, the state did.
But this is, this is under Exhibit B, um the MMC and it's page fifty, PDF, page fifty-two. Text, page sixteen, but.
Um the statute requires no more than four-foot setbacks. The statute says that, so we're bound under the MMC. We're bound to abide by that.
It's crazy, but.
Okay, so the fire department, can the fire department turn it down?
Yeah.
Can I, can I just add that, uh so we do have a very high fire hazard language in the MMC and that does require a five-foot setback.
So then we we'd be fine.
Yes, that's correct.
So maybe where, maybe where we're saying four in here for the benefit of the state law. There should be a footnote or something that that points that says there's other language. Otherwise, maybe somebody will get. You know, halfway through their plan before they figure out they need to shave off a foot.
So I got a call this weekend um from Josh Spiegel, and he said on the setback, what about now that the fire department's. Requiring us to have five-foot clearance all the way around, and now you're gonna go to four-foot? Um. Does what does that do to us, you guys? This, does that? Does that hurt us or it's not applicable here or what what?
So I I just, I I wanna um go back to what Tyler indicated is. That in the MMC, the city is allowed, and and Todd can correct me if I'm uh with this. Um. To um. Include um provisions that are related to public safety. And so. The very high fire hazard area, which is citywide. And which is in the MMC would require a five-foot setback. So um staff can look at ways to cross-reference that so that as Commissioner Hill. Indicated that it is clear.
We have someone come in and they go, but the state says like it only has to be four feet. What do we do then?
So the fire department requires five, it's five feet.
We refer them to the municipal code and and which will have a provision that says they have to do five feet. Uh if they're in a very high fire hazard area.
Correct.
Yeah, but now I'm thinking about Joyce, isn't it that um that that's only for the, it goes back to the egress thing? There's egress that has to deal with that too.
Oh, that's right. Thank you.
I think for this particular case, sorry, is that uh it wouldn't be considered development. There'll be, you know, if they had a non-conformity. We wouldn't have to worry about it because it's not development, cuz it's it's a, it's a conversion of existing uh space. And so we treat it like we would any other non-conforming building and they're allowed to keep it so as they don't um do something else. To that that uh that that uh goes against the LCP in terms of the non-conforming structure.
But they can remodel, can they remodel that space and take the extra foot?
They they can't go more. So if they're, if we're in the MMC, they're only converting what's existing.
Yes, and and yeah, I apologize. That high, very high fire hazard uh language only relates to um. Properties with one means of uh ingress and egress. That would require the five-foot setback.
That stays, that stays.
Yes, that's.
No questions. Okay, next.
What what is the owner occupancy change on January first, twenty twenty-five? What does that refer to?
Um Todd, you wanna? Address that section, the owner occupancy requirement after twenty twenty-five?
For Chair, is it all right?
Oh, yes, of course.
The state law says that um starting in twenty twenty-five, cities can. Begin imposing owner occupancy requirements on new ADUs.
Okay, so we can we put that in now? Is it in there now?
The the code currently says that you, uh the city cannot do that until twenty twenty-five.
Until twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, but it doesn't say they can do it in twenty twenty-five. So I would suggest that we put it in there.
I think it does. If if it was based on uh. The original draft that came from our office, it does.
It says unless applicable law requires otherwise, all ADUs that are permitted on or after January one, twenty twenty-five. Are subject to an owner occupancy requirement.
Okay, yes, so it is in there.
It's in there.
Okay, now can I ask?
Does that mean?
A dumb question, and that is.
Could I ask what an owner occupancy requirement is? That means they can't be a rental unit?
Correct.
Kind of knocks our report your income thing and call it.
No, it, well, it means that the owner has to occupy the property, one of the two dwellings on the on the lot as. The owner's primary. Uh resident in legal domicile, so they're either in you or they're in the main house, but.
I thought that was already one of the rules, but okay.
That was for yours, Jeff. That was.
Yeah, hey, that would be a nice precedent for an STR ordinance, huh?
Yeah, so that's in there, uh but uh. My question would be, it it seems to me. That this has to go to coastal, correct? And it's gotta go to.
I'll say MMC, but yes, the LCP.
Okay, so. Would that ever occur? Is this? How much time do we have? Where it's actually in effect before January first, twenty twenty-five? I mean, in reality, it's it's like.
At the rate that we're going right now, doesn't look like it.
Well, we're speeding along. This isn't two o'clock. It's not even ten thirty. I'm just saying, in general, this is kinda. Semi-moon, it's gonna be a couple months or something. Or is that, am I totally wrong?
So. A- as you know, once the planning commission makes a recommendation, city council, they need to help hold a public hearing, and then it would be up. It would go up to the coastal commission. And again, that's the LCP, not the MMC, I believe, and Richard, you or Tyler can um cut, correct me if I'm wrong. The MMC provisions would not go into effect uh until the LCP, the matching LC or the LCP. Is is that correct? Is that the standard?
Yes, that is how we typically process uh these types of zone text amendments and LCPs together.
So we're talking a very small period of time. It's not a big deal. You couldn't do it now. You can't, you have to wait till it's all approved.
It applies to any ADU from twenty twenty-five. It applies to any ADU from twenty twenty-five on, so.
Yeah, I know. I'm saying the the exemption period before twenty twenty-five is like going to be tiny because of the, it has to be approved.
Yeah.
Okay.
What's next?
Well, I I would like to understand multi-family because I, especially parking, getting rid of, I understand that we got, we we got rid of this converting units to if I'm correct, early in the meeting when we got rid of converting unit, uh, apartment units to two units or whatever, because they had to have an extra outside entrance and all this kind of stuff. So I'm not worried about that. What I'm worried about is we have areas of town where we have uh, garages, especially East Malibu where they actually front the highway where there's no place to park at all. Zero, and they're all the same. They're all lined up. So if we say, yeah, I can convert your garage to an ADU, then nobody has a place to park. Uh, the whole neighborhood has no place to park and Malibu Road is exactly a situation. The I forgot who reported us that eighty-five percent of the houses on West Malibu Road are already STRs. And uh, so if we make ADUs, that they're going to run out as STRs, there'll be no public parking at all on that end of Malibu Road, which I would think the coastal commission would not like. Um, and and in the case of East Malibu, it's like a death trap. Uh, are you ever going to get a car there? So is that still part of this proposal or we we eliminated that? Because we, I think we need to make some exceptions. When you convert a garage, that you have to, there has to be some parking somewhere uh, around. Uh, because you're not only eliminating the tenant of the apartment that used to park there, but you're adding a new one. Um, you're taking away at least two parking spots. And in the case of, well, anywhere from basically uh, Duke's standard, uh, whatever that restaurant is, uh, you got bunches of them.
So Vice Vice Chair Mazza, uh, keep in mind that uh, anytime uh, someone is proposing to convert a non-habitable space to a habitable space, it is processed under the LCP. And the LCP requires replacement parking for garage conversions, plus one space for the ADU unit.
Well, I thought you could, I thought you went under the MMC if you weren't building anything new. You're just filling in a hole.
Uh, no, coastal, it it a, the question is what is being converted? So if you're converting a bedroom, it's already habitable and being used for habitable per purposes. That goes under the uh, MMC. If you are converting an unhabitable area, meaning no one's living in there now legally, then it is considered development because it's a new unit, a new development, and it requires a uh, ACDP.
Well, doesn't it say that if you convert your garage, you don't have to build a park uh, 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 another garage?
That is in the MM- MMC. So uh, keep in mind, the the process is somebody submits their uh, ADU and the first thing staff will do is look to see whether it can be processed under the MMC. They would look to see, like, oh no, you're converting your garage. That's a hat, that is non-habitable space. You have to be processed under the LCP.
So in all cases, well, basically in the case of East Malibu, you would not be able to build it. On most of those duplexes or wherever they are.
Right, unless.
I'm on shadows. They just flat out wouldn't be able to have one.
And you you couldn't even put it in a bedroom in one of those because you'd still need an extra parking space.
Right, okay, I got it. I got it. I just didn't want to hit a loophole there.
Our commission, you have your hand up.
It was answered.
Okay.
What's next?
Next.
Um, okay, uh, under, under provisions, definitions, uh, on the zone text amendment, there's a provision that says living area and it says uh, finished basements, but does not include unfinished basements or attics. Um, I'm wondering why we would say that when you're gonna, nobody's gonna build a basement to leave it empty. Um, here.
We talked about basements?
What?
Didn't we talk about basements?
No, I'm talking about the definition of living area.
No, I think, I think we did discuss it. There's a, uh, I think it may be, do we, John, you just want to remove that text?
Well, I'm I'm wondering from Joyce, why would an unfinished basement be different than a finished basement? And and we should probably eliminate the word unfinished. Because it, it's
Um.
It doesn't need to be there.
Yeah, eh eh, so yeah, the the commission has had this discussion and that living area was um, related to how you determine the size of the unit. And a decision was made that you wanted to use the total development square footage if if I, if I, if I understood that correctly. And so this, this, we would have to revise that section consistent with commission's direction.
So you would take out the unfinished?
Uh, we would probably uh, take out the living area discussion. Tyler, are you following?
Yeah, yeah, I think these, I think uh, Commissioner Mazza was talking about the living area definition and we proposed changes to that definition that includes unfinished basements or attic rooms with floor ceiling heights less than six feet. I I'm not recalling.
No, that's lesser fish. You never count anything less than six feet. I'm talking about a regular basement. This is your, this basement. It doesn't say less than six feet.
But I think you're talking about the the language that's proposed that changes that definition of living area.
Okay, okay, as long as it's changed.
But what what, I think Joyce is saying is you don't want us to, it sounds like that was part of a discussion before, but now that we went back to, you know, the second unit language, maybe it's not applicable?
Mr. Leschman, you've got your hand up.
I do. Thank you, Chair. If we're talking about the definition of living area in or livable area, I don't remember which, in uh, in the MMC, that's set by statute. If we're talking about the definition in the LCP, of course, you're free to tinker with it.
Yeah, it's the LCP I'm talking about.
Um. Where in the LCP is it, John? I'm I'm I'm.
Uh, if you go under multi-family, it's chapter.
You got a page number?
Yeah, it's page seven of the amendment. Multi-family residential district. Uh, wait, 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 wait.
It's seven?
No, wait, I I turned the page.
Commissioner, uh, Jennings, it it's also, um, and I got, I apologize, I don't have the page number. An ADU that's attached to a primary dwelling is limited to fifty percent of the living area.
Yeah, I'm seeing it now. And then we also included in section uh, E of three, the three point ten chapter that we're proposing. And I think it's more of a clarification because we talked about ADUs and JDUs converted from habitable space that aren't considered development. And we go on to clarify that unfinished basements uh, would not be considered habitable space.
Next.
Okay, I just want to be clear that the way it's written, you have to have a house to have a ADU. And it says you can get the permit at the same time. If I went out and got a permit for a house and an ADU and I never built the house, but I built the ADU, that's not, that's not possible, correct? You could not get a certificate of occupancy on that ADU?
I believe the language says that um, it has to be built concurrently.
Yeah, maybe it's an accessory, so that, you know, that would become the single family residence of that lot, right, Richard? In that scenario, if they only built that structure.
Yep. Y- y- yes, okay with the Chair. I'll answer real quick. Uh, that is correct. You can't have an accessory without the main thing there. Uh, so we would not issue uh, our final sign-off on the property nor I don't believe the building official would give, grant the C of O. In situations uh, like Joyce mentioned, you concurrently build and sometimes folks will live in the ADU while the house is getting finished off. We've had that happen. But we, once again, it's a temporary authorization and we require the main house to be finished.
Mostly the the fire rebuild people, right?
Correct.
In for.
Now, I don't know where this section is, but there's a section in there that says if you built an ADU between two thousand eighteen and some other time, uh, and it was illegal, it's now legal. And that didn't make sense to me. It was, it was a how could something you bootlegged in be legal all of a sudden?
So uh, this is something that I think Todd can also address. I believe you're now speaking uh, about the language in the um, MMC.
Yeah, and and I don't understand why why I could just go bootleg something in some short period of time and then just because that time passed, which is recent, it's from two thousand eighteen to I can't remember, like a year from now. All of a sudden, it's it's legal no matter what you do. You could have a oil refinery there. Um, what is the reason for that?
Mr. Leschman. Chair and Commission, um, that's not going to be relevant because that will all be handled under the LCP.
So should we take it out of the line, out of the LCP amendment?
We're going to leave it in the MMC because that's where it has to be under state law. Do what you will with the LCP.
Well, I I got so many notes here. Is it in the LCP and should we take it out? Because it seems weird.
It's not in the LCP.
Okay.
Okay, next.
A quick clarification on the square, the area, square footage in in the LCP. Square footage does not include storage spaces over six feet high, but if you wanted to have a bunch of five foot high, say, storage space attached to the side of an ADU, does that count as TDSF? How do we handle that situation?
Sheds count. Right, Richard?
What, if it's less than six feet high, it's just like, say, you just packed a bunch of storage all around the outside of a building and made it twice as.
You are designing a very ugly house.
Yeah, but you know, we have actually.
In the backyard.
Greg, we've actually determined that, that um, tents are structures and count. So I don't know.
So is that square footage or not?
It's TDSF, I would assume.
For the purposes of TDSF for the property or for the, or for the the ADU?
Well, that's kind of my question because for the property, it is not, if it's, if it's less than six feet, I believe.
Only if it's under something.
Director Malika.
Yes, thank you, Chair. The it, when something's under six feet, it's and and someone's looking to to ha- ask us not to count that towards square footage. We require it to be a mechanical space or a crawl space. Uh, if it starts looking like a a room stuck to the side of the house that they that they can't give us a reasonable explanation for, then it definitely has to be counted towards the total development square footage. But typically, when we're, like I said, we're looking we're looking at that carefully to make sure that it's, you know, truly a mechanical space or or something that's not going to be habitable, but it it starts to look a little fishy if someone starts sticking a bunch of areas and a- as Commissioner Peeks said, an ugly house kind of raises a red flag.
Well, but so so they want, they say, well, I want to put my pool noodles in there and my yard furniture and have a storage for all, you know, all that kind of stuff. Um, and it's not counting towards TDSF of the overall lot, right? But it they're they're sticking it on the, all around the size of the ADU, say.
Right. If it's like a box, a three by five foot area, you know, and it's a couple feet tall, it it wouldn't be reasonable. But if all of a sudden you start seeing that there's two thousand square feet or five hundred square feet like that, then that's something that we investigate a bit more uh, and give the, you know, I would give the owner opportunity to remove it or have us count it if they can't demonstrate that it truly is some sort of mechanical space because something like that tends to lead to code enforcement.
Parking.
My suggestion is that we let the planning deter- director make the determination on that, and I think that he'll do a very good job.
I agree.
Richard, isn't that wouldn't those be considered sheds and you only get one and it can only be ten by twelve?
And that's correct. Uh, the the policy on sheds is exactly as uh, Commissioner Mazza, Vice Chair Mazza pointed out. We allow for one shed. Uh, that's kind of the freebie that came from that policy and in the second shed or anything beyond that, we start counting. And so once again, we haven't really seen a situation. I can think of one person who tried to claim a bunch of under deck space and we actually ended up counting that at the end of the day.
Okay, uh, quick question in in the junior ADUs occupancy. If you convert it back to the primary residence, um, you have to get your permission, as I understand it, and uh, it has to be owner occupied. Uh, how are you going to, how are you going to know and how are you going to enforce? You just trust they tell you they're, they're making it back into a house?
There would have to be, uh, no, there'd have to be uh, a inspection by a building official um, and planning to ensure that that room was converted back to a bedroom. The the only or the most obvious reason somebody would ask uh, to do that is uh, they want to either get rid of or amend the deed restriction because all of these would be um, deed restricted.
Or they want to move out and rent it. Because there's an owner occupancy thing. I'm just looking at how you enforce.
So we're we're kind of, we're kind of in a spot here where I think we've covered a lot of areas. And ones that really kind of troubled everybody, and I think we've gotten our answers. What what do we think about where we are right now as far as taking a vote? Putting our amendments in this and getting this done because we can't, we can't afford to wait on this thing. There, the state, the state, everybody, they're watching us here.
There was an issue that we put a pin in. I can't remember now what the issue was.
One of them was multi-family.
What was it?
Multi-family.
I thought we did that.
No, earlier on, it was, it was, it was, we had, oh gosh. Who's got the notes? Tyler, help us.
Yeah, you're talking about the uh, the whole two thirds thing that we were discussing? You wanted us to come back with something on that? Is that what?
No, it was language.
It was John hammering on something and.
It was, it was language on on the eighteen feet and what counts as a second form. We said we reduced to sixteen, so you had to change the language somehow.
Yeah, yeah, I was saying, I was saying that.
MMC and the IP, you had to coordinate the two. I think we're done with that other than you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to do anything to that because um, I was just saying that because if if you did want to uh, do something above sixteen feet that counts as two thirds, we'd have to add language, but we we we, the the language that exists covers that areas above eighteen feet.
Okay, can we take a vote, Gus?
Will we get them all back?
He, yes, Tyler.
Uh, sure. Joyce, you want to go and then I'll help you. Sorry, I'm, I got my notes, but yeah, thank you.
Okay. So um, the height um, was going to be sixteen feet or twenty-four feet with a site plan review. The size four hundred to one thousand um, with ability.
I I heard twelve hundred.
Oh, true, twelve hundred, okay.
Four hundred to twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred. Twelve hundred, okay. All right, then we don't need to grandfather in the uh fire.
Watch it, Joyce.
What's that?
Watch it.
Joyce, Joyce, I, this is Monica. I just had um one question on the on the height. Um, I believe we were going to stick with the um requirements for the second dwelling units um above sixteen for heights above sixteen feet, and that was twenty four feet um for the flat roof and then twenty eight feet for pitch roof.
Okay, is was that the?
No.
This is my consensus.
No. Yeah, no.
Yeah, I thought they cut it off at twenty four.
You cut it off at twenty four, Ms. Kessier.
Yeah.
The twenty four regardless of pi- of pitch or flat, right?
Correct.
Right, and and with a site plan review, so a second unit can go to twenty eight with a site plan review, but that would um be eliminated and an ADU um could only go to twenty four with the site.
Mr. Leishman, you have your hand up. I do. Just briefly, I wanted to let you know that I'm gonna leave the Zoom now and leave you in the most capable hands of Monica and staff as you refine your recommendations.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
You. Thank you, Mr. Leishman.
Safe drive home. Thank you. Oh, wait, you're probably already home.
Yeah. All right, so, okay, so that that's the height. Um uh parking, we were going to leave the parking requirements as is, although we were going to remove the ability to do parking lists in the MMC. Um.
I remember now what the pin was in for. Pin was for the uh restricted access diagrams and all that business about about you know, whether you only have one access way and all that stuff. We talked about that. We never got a decision on that, but don't let me interrupt you, but come back to that after you've finished your stuff.
Okay, uh, let's see, and then for um the reporting of the rent, it instead of asking for them to report it, I believe the consensus was uh they would be required to um to report. The setbacks would remain the same in the LCP. Um and Tyler, what was the direction on the basement issue?
It was good.
I think I think of the language, well, the language we have, I think, is good enough, because that's why I wanted clarification earlier in case we need to add additional language, but the the current language that we're proposing already says that the basement you know, attached to a ADU would be included in the square footage.
Okay.
Right, uh, but uh we didn't I think we said finished or unfinished.
Well.
I don't think that we need to make a clarification as to whether it's finished or unfinished. I think we just say I don't care if it's finished or unfinished. If you're building a basement attached to an ADU, it's counting as the TDSF of the ADU.
Right, but uh the language as it is now differentiates the two.
Oh, I
Uh, not for that section. I'm sorry. It just says basements.
Okay.
Good. I'm sorry, Joyce, you said no change to setbacks, but we wanted to put a cross reference between the four foot and the five foot.
Oh, that's right. Thank you. All right. All right, and that's in the MMC, yes. All right, and some of the square footage, no parking list. I think on the two third rule, uh, the direction was uh to um leave it as written, but uh to relook at the language in the MMC. To make sure that um uh it was um properly written in the MMC uh because that is only and Tyler, again, correct me if I'm wrong, that two thirds rule is mainly in the LCP. Is that correct?
Well, it's in both. Uh, I think what they're saying is uh it's it's written differently in each one.
Right.
Right, so we need well, what we will do is in what we forward to the council, we'll make certain to address uh what Commissioner Jennings brought up, which is that it doesn't uh it the one calls out height and the other one doesn't. And so we'll make sure that sixteen feet is addressed so that we don't have a uh issue or inconsistency there.
All right.
And then, so we you got one more. We also had a consensus, no, no short term rentals.
Yes, that's that's already in the um draft before you, no short term rentals.
Right.
And then I believe um I think that captured that um oh, and then we were going to use total development square footage as opposed um to to uh measure the size of the units. And Tyler, did I miss anything?
I think I think that's what I got.
What? What about multifamily?
We eliminated them.
Well, I think you guys wanted it as as was proposed, no? That detached only would be allowed?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was our consensus. We also, I I think we should put in this motion uh the changes that Joyce brought up in the beginning. I can't remember what they were, but there were some language changes.
Yes, right. Change of language, right, exactly. So the um, okay.
But my thought now is that I I feel like I could vote yes for, well, we still have a thing with a pin in it, so apart from that.
Why don't we vote on this and then then to discuss that and
Okay, but regardless of that one pin, I feel like I could vote yes if we're basing it on what we have agreed to throughout the course of the hearing. Not necessarily what we're identifying right now as the sort of summary of what we did, because we might have forgotten something now, so with the proviso that you're going to actually go back and look at the meeting and see what we all agreed on. That that that's what I would be voting on, the totality of the meeting.
You're mainly talking about language and details.
Yeah.
I think we covered all the subjects.
Yeah, just in case it's getting late, maybe we left something out. I don't know.
So so can we just, I it should be pretty quick. I I think we we all know what the issues are with regard to the more than one way, one more, more than one access or not, not more than one access restrictions that John was talking about, either coming from the North Area Plan or the ones that Joyce had put in from the earlier uh version of this. Um, and I guess the question is whether there are three votes to to put that in or not.
What I would prefer, and it's up to you guys. I prefer to vote on these. Uh, so I can vote yes. I I personally would not want to be responsible for killing people. Let the city council do that.
Okay, fine, but that that that's let's do, let's do it that way then.
Can I also, though, part of that discussion had to do with the interaction of the egress question with the road width question of twenty four foot requirement. I don't feel like we necessarily need twenty four foot wide.
Well, let's let's vote on this and then do those.
Why don't we just let the city council deal with those?
We could.
Yeah, but I what I'm saying is let's vote on what we've agreed on. And then we can discuss that and decide whether to vote on it or not. And we've got a motion right now. All we have to do is say yes or no. And then we get five yeses.
Well, do do we all, do we all? I mean, I sort of feel like twenty four feet wide is a little bit arbitrary and there may be
No, Craig, listen to me a second. We have a motion here. Haven't discussed those. Those have to do with the multi entrance and fire safety, so we're gonna vote on this, I would request, and then take that up as the next item.
Okay.
So Dennis's motion and Jeff's second.
Right, plus all the other stuff we did.
And I give it a third.
Director Maleka, you have something?
Uh, yes, Chair, appreciate it. Uh, just to prevent any issues as we move forward to the city council, I'd like to make certain that the motion encompasses the changes that you would like to see in uh Joyce, I think, correct me if I'm misspeaking here, it's getting late and we had a meeting last night. Uh, I'd like to make certain the motion captures the modifications you'd like to see us present as the recommended changes by this body to the council, uh, cause I I want to make sure that we, and I do this because I I I want to be able to have my staff have the right direction on the exact areas to modify and I I want to confirm basically that the motion is we're looking to limit on the height from sixteen feet to twenty four feet with the site plan review. Staff will be revisiting the site plan review language. On basements, we want them to be uh included regardless of uh if I'm capturing, I think Commissioner Peak's last comment. Uh, regardless of finished or unfinished, so we count the basement. Size, we want no less than four hundred, no more than twelve hundred square feet. This commission was very, uh, I think unanimous on no reduction in parking. They want the reporting of the the rents to be required. There was also um comments about removal of parking lists from the municipal code uh provisions and no change to the LCP setbacks, but clarify five foot setbacks uh in the MMC uh language of reference with the very high fire severity zone. I believe those up to this point are the areas that this commission wanted to see modified before uh modified for the the council. Uh, is that correct, Chair?
It is correct.
We had no STRs also.
Uh, that that's already in the code.
Sure. Okay.
Okay, I I have to reiterate my point. I can only vote yes if we're incorporating the totality of the consensus that we made tonight. Uh, it it's too late for me to to listen to what you just said, Richard, and say, yeah, that was all it. We might have forgot something, so I want to, I want to vote yes to anything that we decided in the meeting.
Well, we have to think of the subject, Craig. Uh, I think Richard will go through the little nitty gritty stuff we were talking about on language. We don't have to put that in the resolution, correct, Richard?
Uh, y- yes, my goal was to cover the topics that this commission wanted. I mean, it it this commission wanted changed before we get to the city council. And then the the nitty gritty on each of those changes, of course, will definitely be pulling from the the video uh as the record of this. Um, I just I I just want to make
Go ahead, Richard.
I I'm sorry, I I just want to make certain that we don't get to the council and then all of a sudden uh somebody say that we completely missed a discussion on ADUs were supposed to have showers instead of bathtubs. So I really just want to make sure that those are the areas that this commission wants us to change, uh, because this motion
Exception that we're gonna vote on two more items.
Co- un- understand, yes.
I think you got them. I we can, our brains are just as shot as yours, but I think we got out of five of us, we got we got them, the main topics, don't you think?
I agree.
I've been, I'm a no vote if that's how we're gonna do it, because I I I can't keep, I didn't take notes on what all we did, so.
Well, this is the same every meeting, every meeting we have, we have. Okay, well, let's vote.
The only, the only other thing I would suggest, Richard, is is for for Craig's purposes as well as my own, um I I I would many of the changes that we talked about were adopted by a vote, not consensus. Consensus means everybody agreed, at least that's the way I take it. And there are certain things that I didn't agree about, so you could say that this was the sense of the commission. This is the, you know, the um straw votes and so forth, but but don't imply that each one of them was unanimous.
Understand.
But but if we took a straw vote that we happen to be forgetting now, because it's late and and it went, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, but how's that different than any other meeting we've had?
Well, usually we we we're not four hours on one item and, you know.
It's not, it's
Whatever we do along the meeting, you do it this way. What?
It's a, it it just gives context to the city council, which I think is important for them to have.
Yeah. Yeah, just, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, so well, just take a vote, Rebecca.
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, Chair Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Pass.
Um, are you abstaining or?
I I I I I don't know suddenly. Um, if 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 there's some reassurance that whatever is in here, if we've missed something, that that's actually going to get reported to them. As Skylar said, this is, this is all for their consideration, right?
Yeah, do that in a, in a, in a in an ordinance.
Greg, I think that you're really feeling this one. I'm really going to urge you to support it.
Yeah, no, I'm basically there. I just don't want us to have left something out, so I'll 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 vote yes with an asterisk.
Yeah.
Greg.
Okay, I'm gonna take that as a yes, because I don't have an asterisk. Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chair Maza?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries.
Okay, now, as I understand it, we're gonna go off to uh exit, exit and road width.
Ingress.
But but why don't we just ask if there's if there's three votes to support the inclusion of the of the double act?
I think that's a great idea.
Okay, but I just, I would like to have a little bit of debate, uh.
But you, you have talked about it quite a bit tonight.
Okay, I just want to reiterate. When we have a fire, you guys stand by your vote. This is a city council decision. It's political. Okay, it's not safety oriented. The Safety Commission has never studied it. They've done an ingress egress uh uh plan for Malibu that's been adopted by the city council, and this is not under that. And the fire department, the chief told me, no way is he gonna go anywhere with eleven foot roads and et cetera, so.
That's, that's another, that's another conversation. We're talking about two exits and egress and all that right now, so to me, we'll take the three votes if we need it and or the straw vote right now, and Commissioner Jennings, how do you feel about that?
Mr. Jennings, you're muted.
If feeling uh yes means to add them in, then I'm a no.
Commissioner Peak?
I'm a no.
Commissioner Hill?
Uh, I'm not sure of the question, but I want two egresses.
Vice Chair.
Uh, it's a no.
So I guess, no, you're a yes.
I mean, yes, a yes.
So I was a yes then in that case, yeah.
All right, so what with with that, then we should do, we could take a vote.
Well, we just did, and that it's the same as the straw vote. We took on all the other things. It can be reported to the commission just that way. Just, just, we don't have to confuse them. Then we need to talk about what road width now.
Road width.
It's a three, two vote instead of a five oh.
Right, three, road width, road width.
I I feel like road width is a little more context dependent and um there may be places where you need twenty four feet wide, and there may well be places where whatever is there is adequate. So I I'm not sure.
Why would you say that since the county determined and the fire department and everybody else does not agree?
Well, the 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 rule, the the law up here is when you have one house on a road, it's fifteen foot minimum and more than one house, it's twenty foot minimum. So I I don't know why twenty foot isn't adequate in most case. Maybe you need twenty four somewhere, but it seems like twenty foot should be adequate.
Now, you actually, it actually says in the municipal code that in Big Rock, it's twenty feet.
So it, streets are twenty feet gutter to gutter, not outside a curb to curb, gutter to gutter.
Well, they're twelve feet, fair lane, twelve feet.
I think that's why
On your code.
That's why they're coming up with twenty four feet is that they're now wanting twelve feet in each direction.
That's code.
Which, by the way, when you drive by tuna canyon, you've got twenty four feet going up there, and I took after Fernandez up there, and he loved it, because you can have two trucks go by each other and you don't have to pull the mirrors. I'll give you that.
My case, you just made my case.
These are hypothetical fire trucks.
Oh, these are, these are what he had to do. He would have rather had a lemon foot road, it's a lot less grating.
All right, so the uh uh I I'm sorry, is the, is what we're arguing over whether that i- unless you have twenty four foot wide roadways, you cannot have ADUs? Is that correct? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
I don't, I don't agree with that.
I I would say, I'm take twenty feet.
I would say that I'm comfortable saying twenty feet, but I don't know if there's a reason as to why to be comfortable with something that's less than that if
The fire department gave, after the fire, they gave fifteen feet. They gave fifteen feet all over, so if somebody
But that's fifteen, fifteen feet for a driveway? Hold on, fifteen feet for a driveway or fifteen feet for a road?
That's, the access is fifteen for a dro- for one house and more than one house, it's twenty feet.
No, I talked to the chief of the the whole pouting. It's twenty four feet. They go and look at the, go and look at the requirements for any road.
Just, but there's not, there's not twenty four feet always on property. You can't always get twenty four feet out of fifteen without being
You can't always get a fire truck up eleven either. You know, as I said before, the fire trucks will not go up. They're gonna doom people to go ahead and build, put spakers inside so you get a shower while you burn it down.
John, if that's the issue, then the fire department can tell them that they can't build it.
Yeah.
And they do.
Is there consensus to recommend you have to have a minimum of twenty feet wide in order to build an ADU? No way. No, no.
I mean, I would support that, but.
I'll support twenty, but, well.
Well, then that's a, we've got three.
I don't, I don't.
We got me, Skylar, John, and, and I think Craig.
Yeah, I'm saying twenty, I'm saying twenty.
Okay, we got four.
Got four to one.
What, what are you saying, De- Dennis?
I'm saying what the county says they said, and it's fifteen feet.
Oh, you, that's for one.
Driveway, driveway.
But I, I think.
Driveway road.
No, no, when there's more than, Dennis, I, the way that I understand it is that when there's more than one house on a road, which if we're adding an ADU, it would be two houses.
Yeah.
Technically, that, then that's when the threshold goes to twenty feet for the road. So in, in this situation, I think it would be prudent for us to say twenty feet.
Okay, so we've got four. We've recommended, that, we don't need to take any more votes on that, except for the vote to adjourn, which I now move.
Well, do we, no, wait, 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 wait. We don't have a vote. We haven't taken a vote.
We, we don't.
Take a vote. We've had consensus, but we have to take a vote to report to the city.
It's, 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 it's four to one.
But we, he just.
And have them call a roll, that's all.
Call the roll.
And we decided, did we already call a roll on uh, uh, the ingress egress?
Yeah.
We've called a roll for everyone also.
Would any of the staff members like to recapture the, what we're voting on as I call the roll? Is it fifteen feet width road or twenty-four feet if there are multiple houses or would? I, I'm sorry, I got lost in that.
Twenty, twenty feet is what we're talking about. The minimum is twenty feet.
You need a, a minimum uh, road of twenty feet um, to have an ADU, and that is only, and correct me if I'm wrong, commissioners, only in those instances where there's only one means of ingress and egress to your house. If you have two means of e- egress, that twenty feet does not apply. It's the only if you have one means of exit. So, okay, I'm glad I asked, so it's twenty, regardless of how many accessways you have to your house, roads going speeds to your house.
Yeah.
And we've already voted on the other one, right?
That's what fire code says anyway.
No, it doesn't.
I, I live on a narrow road.
Take a vote, hang on, let's take, go ahead, take a vote on, on your road width. Go ahead, Rebecca.
I think there's more to the motion. Um, so for the, my understanding is that there are two aspects that were voted by straw poll. One was that there would be no requirement for two means of egress.
Correct. That was the one that passed three to two.
And then the second was the road width that would apply regardless of um, number of egress points.
We didn't actually vote on that one yet.
I, I mean.
He just straw polled him as four to one, but he would.
On both of these rather than formal votes, and is there a maker seconder for either or both of these?
They were both straw polls.
I won't make the motion on both of them.
We're gonna have to have two votes, John. If we're gonna vote, we're gonna have.
I know, I'm trying to do two at once, so I, okay, I'll make the motion on the first one, and then I'll make the motion on the second one if somebody will second them.
Okay, the first one being the uh, double access ways?
No requirement for two means of egress.
Okay, I'll second that.
Thank you. I'm just trying to make sure I capture it properly. Um, Vice Chair Mazza?
No.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Wait.
Maybe you guys are wording it wrong. I think that.
I, I think we are too, but I figured I'm safe voting against John.
So the motion would be that there are, there will be no requirements for two means of egress to an ADU property.
That's right, so he voted no, I voted yes.
Yeah, there you go.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Um, Chair Smith?
Yes.
I'm missing someone. I'm so tired, I'm sorry. Commissioner Hill? I apologize.
That's done. Now road width.
And now this motion is from?
John.
Thank you. Seconded by me. Thank you so much. Okay. Uh, and so the motion is for the minimum road width of twenty feet in order to have an ADU on your property. And Vice Chair Mazza?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
I'm going yes, because you guys said if there's two, it's gotta go to twenty feet, yes.
Okay, I. I make a motion, we adjourn in honor of John Wall.
Yes.
Seconded. It's already seconded, I guess.
Rule call, please.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes, have a great evening.
We are fabulous.
Everybody, you're getting.
M forty-five.
John Wall's still detonating right now.
John Wall's still living up in his house off of, uh, Philip there?
Was, he died yesterday.
Yeah, but maybe he did continue to live there because.
Well, it burned down and they rebuilt it.
Yeah, okay.
For clarification, does anyone happen to know the spelling of his last name?
W A L L.
Okay, I wasn't sure if it was an H L or an L L. Thank you very much.
I can get you the information if you send stuff, you know, scrolls or anything, but whatever.
He's the guy who developed, he's the guy who developed that Total Development Square Footage uh, arc chart that we've been using for all those years.
Wow, also grew great avocados.
They did.
We're getting pretty slammed by rain here. If you see the radar there, I don't know if you can see it very well.
I do see it.
Yeah, it's gonna be an exciting drive home.